I know the month is almost over, but I do encourage you to take in any act that become available through the year, enjoy their storytelling, music and dancing, and more importantly, take time to learn about the Indigenous past, how it intersects with your own, and reflect on how we can work together. I also note that June is Seniors Month, Pride Month, the start of summer and the end of school, so much to fit into one month, so as we close out June, let's just take a moment to take a deep breath and take a moment of silence. Thank you. The Township of Woolwich acknowledges with deep respect that the land we call home has existed since time immemorial, long before our communities were formed and long before we arrived here. Indigenous peoples have had a deep and lasting relationship with this land, caring for it, learning from it, and living alongside all that it sustains. We are grateful to First Peoples who have lived on and cared for this land and who continue to do so today. In particular, we recognize the Chanotin, also known as the Atawandaran, the Anishinaabe, and the Ohonishonee people. We honor their deep connection to this land, and we acknowledge their wisdom, resilience, and leadership. These communities have protected and cared for the land with respect, responsibility, and a sense of shared trust. As we move forward, we hope to build a future based on mutual respect, shared responsibility, and stronger relationships with one another. May we continue to learn together, to care for each other, and to honor all those who share this place with us. Do any council members have declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, there are no items to come forward from closed, no public meetings. We do have one delegation during the council portion of this meeting and multiple delegations later on during committee of the whole. If you are a delegate, your time limit is posted on the agenda. There will be a timer on the screen, and you will hear a warning sound when you have one minute left, and again when your time is up. For all those speaking to council tonight, once you are finished, you can return to your seat, or virtual participants can turn off their mic and video. All are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or leave as wish. Our first delegate tonight is Chad Klemmer. Chad? If you want to just press the button there, and a green light should come on, and on the, yeah, on the front, just on the front in the middle. Yeah, there you go.
There we go.
Thank you, welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Good evening, and thank you for giving me the chance to speak here. I am here to request approval for a second driveway entrance at my home on 24 First Street West. We bought the house last summer, and there was already a gravel area in place where it looked like a second driveway had been started. Based on that, we assumed we were able to be able to finish it, cut the curb and pour concrete to complete it properly. The extra parking space was one of the reasons we chose this home from the start. We planned to finish the second driveway, and now we're ready to move ahead and do the work professionally. And when I called the township to ask about the process, I was told that my property wasn't wide enough for a second driveway, but according to my zoning, I'm allowed to have a total driveway width of 10 meters. Our current driveway is six meters wide, and the proposed second driveway would be four meters wide, adding up to exactly 10 meters. There are a few reasons why I would like to have a second driveway, and would be very helpful to my family. It would serve as a main access point to my backyard and pool area. Well, we'll use it for bringing in materials, doing maintenance, and eventually building a shed. Without it, access is very limited on that side of the property. We also have five teenage daughters, and when they have guests over, parking gets tight fast. A second driveway would help keep vehicles off the street, help with traffic flow, and leaving more street parking available for others. Also, I talked to a fellow coworker who lived up the street, and he said over the years, two cars got totaled off because he parked on the street with vehicles hitting them. I would feel horrible if somebody hit one of my parked cars and they got hurt. It's also the only flat area on the property for my younger teenage girls to play basketball, so I could put a basketball net up on the concrete. Our existing driveway is on a slope and not really usable for that. And thinking long term, it's going to take a long time before our girls can afford homes nowadays. Like many young adults today, they'll be living at home probably well into their twenties, each with their own car, having a second driveway would give us more space to accommodate for that. And finally, if this request is denied, we'd have to dig up and remove the gravel that is already there, which feels like a step backwards, and that we have been planning around for the last year. We care about the look and the functionality of our home and our neighborhood. If approved, we'll be installing a poured concrete driveway and keep everything looking tidy. We're simply trying to make our property more functional and reduce the pressure on street parking in the area. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Sir, are there any questions of clarification? Counselor Schwint?
I just quickly pulled up a picture, and I see the gravel area. Would you be joining two driveways to make a U in front, or will they be separate?
Well, that's up for whatever, like, discussion. I had no plan of joining them, but I could join them if need be.
Counselor Kado.
Thanks, Mayor, through you. I'm just wondering if you've engaged with staff regarding this process to a larger degree to see if there is some sort of a resolution you could come to?
They told me to come and present it here.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the delegate? No? Okay, you can take your seat. Thank you for presenting. Counsel, do you have any questions for staff? Yeah, Counselor Kado.
Follow up to my other question, I'm just wondering, I'll just let staff speak to that.
Thank you through you, Mayor Shans.
You're answering before you ask the question, that's scary.
Thank you through you, Mayor Shans, to Counselor Kado. So yes, did speak to Mr. Klemmer, understood that he was in process seeking a second driveway. We have a practice that we've been implementing here in Woolwich for a long time. You would require 30-meter frontage or 100 feet to obtain a potential secondary access or a corner lot, and then you could have an access off of either frontage. That's been a practice. In the absence of that, and it's something that we're looking to do, is we're looking to connect that with the zoning bylaw as well as our engineering design and infrastructure manual. So those two pieces will then solidify that, and that's something that would obviously have council's approval. So in the absence of that, Mr. Klemmer was adamant that he wanted to continue to pursue. He only has 22 meters, so it's short of the 30 meters, therefore I denied that and told him his recourse was to come and speak at council. There are two tests here, though, this evening. I think it's important for council to understand, the first test would be to potentially gain access to the public road allowance, that would be under our department, and council would have that ability to suggest that he could do that tonight, or side with staff and say no. The second test would be committee of adjustment, and I will turn that over to Ms. Freeze.
Yeah, Ms. Freeze?
Yeah, so just to continue on that, there, we don't know for sure, but there is potential that there could be a minor variance required to accommodate this driveway. There are regulations in the zoning bylaw for minimum width of the driveways, but also for lot 30% frontage landscaped area as well as the 30% lot coverage landscaped area as well. So it's very tight whether or not they would be able to meet those requirements. If they can't meet those requirements, there is the process of a minor variance application to request a variation from either any of those regulations. However, in this situation, we are moving towards a zoning bylaw amendment for, before the end of the year, a housekeeping amendment that would look at a number of different things. But one of the things that we are adding or proposing to add to the zoning bylaw is to limit the number of driveway access to individual properties. So as Jared would say, said in the existing policy, we would limit the driveways to one driveway per property unless it was 30 meters or 100 feet in width. The reason behind this and the reason why we would not support a minor variance in this situation is just because it takes away from the streetscape appearance, takes away from on-street parking, it adds additional access points for, so it's a safety issue as well, and it sets a precedent, so you start removing landscaped area along the street, infecting how it looks overall by adding more driveway space.
Any other questions for staff? Counselor Schwint?
Just want to clarify, total driveway width is allowed to be 10 meters right here?
So the zoning bylaw says 10 meters for this lot, yes, but it does not specify whether or not it can be split up between two properties, so we've interpreted that as it could be. So you could have a seven and a three.
Anyone else? Counselor Kado?
Delegate suggested then that he would be within the 10 meters, if I'm not mistaken. Can you just kind of walk me through what that looks like then?
Yeah, so we would just need a diagram of the property to ensure that the zoning regulations could be met. So the maximum 10-meter width, the 30% of the property frontage landscaped and the 30% of the front yard continuous area landscaped as well. So on this property with the two driveways, it will be very close to the minimum, right? So there'll be 30 or less percent, we think, for the landscaped area. And when we kind of measured out on the Google Maps to try to figure out what that width would be between the two driveways, it will be close again. So perhaps they may be able to meet the zoning requirements and not need a minor variance. I just can't verify that without the details.
Anything else? Does council want to take any action on this? Staff, no, Counselor Schwint?
I guess I'd make the motion to approve a secondary access point, provided total access is more than 10 meters. I'll make sure I get that one right.
I would say it's up to council to direct Jared's department in this case to make that driveway cut. As far as whether if it meets the zoning regulations, then there would be no other requirement for council. If it doesn't, it would go to the committee of adjustment for that decision on the minor variance. So the only decision before council here is to support or not support the driveway cut, if I'm saying that correctly. If, in the event that there was a minor variance, and that would be another step that he would have to take at a cost.
So staff anticipated, in case council wanted a motion, they have one written here, do you want me to read it?
Like that.
Yeah? That the Council of the Township of Woolwich regarding the request from Chad Klemmer on June 24th, 2025, approve the request for a secondary driveway access at 24 First Street West Almyra, subject to the approval of a minor variance application from the committee of adjustment, and I would add, if needed. Okay, moved by Counselor Schwint, second by Counsel Grant. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That's carried. So next steps for Mr. Klemmer, what does he have to do next?
Next steps would be to follow up with planning with the plan of the property showing that he can meet the minimum zoning requirements, and if that's the case, then we pass it on to Jared's department for the actual curb cut. If that's not the case, then we would direct him on how to apply for a minor variance.
So who does he contact?
Me?
Okay.
You can contact me.
Or Victor. So contact either Victor here or Deanne, and they can help you with the process going forward. We have consent items for approval this evening. Do any members of council wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, would someone like to move it? Counselor Kado, Counselor Bryant, all those in favor? That is carried. Did we want to talk about cameras on that one?
Mayor Shans, if you wanted to, there was some suggestion that Mr. Pupay wanted to speak to speed cameras.
Did you still want to do that?
Yes, I can, if council would like that.
Counsel? No? All right.
Okay. Through you, Mayor Shans, to council, we do have some updated information regarding the municipal speed camera programming. As everyone is aware, this is run by the region. The township has some active sites currently right now in Winterburn. We do have the Foundation Christian School area on Catherine Street that has a camera in place, and we are waiting on Clearview Parochial School on Three Bridges Road also to receive a camera. So those are the two that we know are going to be active very shortly. And there is a report from regional staff that is going to be going to regional council in the fall, and there is going to be an update on the first six months of the municipal speed camera program and the operations, and an update on the memorandum of understanding with the area municipalities and the road safety reserve. So that's, to stay tuned for that, and Mayor Shans can certainly provide this council with an update after that happens. There are discussions, and this is really what I'd like to get to regarding the rural speed strategy, and I appreciate that this council crafted resolutions recently with concerns, and I do appreciate the effort that was put to that resolution, allowing that to work to flow through, and for a further update to come back to this council. Now, until that time, until we're able to sort out what that rural speed strategy is, there still are a number, and there's 10 sites that we have on our priority list that are urban school zones. And one request that staff would have of this council would, would we be willing to move forward with municipal speed camera enforcement on the 10 urban school sites? And we would pause until council had better information on the rural strategy side of things. And is that something that this council would be interested in looking for? And that's really, I think, at the heart of staff's request here.
So I think it would be good for us to give Jared some advice on that as to where we want to go, because he's the person that the region's going to be working with and contacting. Counselor Bryant?
Thank you, just a quick question. When you're mentioning urban sites, would that include the villages like Conestogo?
That is correct. Conestogo and Floridale Public School would be included in the 10 urban settlements, yes.
Thank you.
Are those the only, you said there were 10 urban within the township?
Yeah, do you want me to list them or no?
Yeah.
Sure, so we would have Park Manor, we would have Almyra District Secondary School, we'd have Conestoga Public School, Floridale Public School, John Mahood, St. Teresa's, Bresla Public School, St. Jacobs, Riverside, and St. Boniface would conclude the 10.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, Counselor Schwint?
I guess I know this is a regional road, so out of our jurisdiction, but I really struggle with a speed camera on Arthur Street in front of EDSF, considering students shouldn't be crossing the road in the middle of the highway there, their first street is, or second street even, 50 feet away. I understand, and to support the needs of us, on Snyder Street by EDSF and the other schools mentioned, but I'd really struggle with Arthur Street.
But through Mayor Shans to Counselor Schwint, just from a data perspective, the two top school zones are Park Manor, the 85th percentile is astronomical to me, 72 in a 40-kilometer zone is what the 85th is, and Almyra District Secondary School is the second highest of the 10, and people are traveling around 47 in a 40, so 17 kilometers over the posted speed limit, so it's pretty significant.
57?
57 kilometers in a 40, yes.
Anything else in terms of direction? I guess I would just ask about the community safety zones, and I think we had talked previously about potential community safety zones, just while we're talking about it in public for people?
Absolutely. So as part of the municipal speed camera program, it was discussed with the area municipalities that it would be appropriate to apply community safety zones where school zones are for the implementation of municipal speed cameras. One of the nuances to a school zone and community safety zone, school zones are dictated, and they have to have access to the roadway to be constituted as a school zone. So an interesting case for us would be the Almyra District Secondary School, you would have access on Arthur Street, you'd have access on Brewbaker and Second Street, but there is actually no access to Snyder Ave. So that does not constitute a school zone on Snyder Ave, and we appreciate the amount of vehicular traffic associated with a school that exists there. So what this council did do is endorse a 40-kilometer speed all around, and what the community safety zone is able to do, because it doesn't have that same restriction, is you are able to apply that section of Snyder Ave that is not a school zone as a community safety zone. So then you can encompass the entire school area where maybe you're not permitted to actually endorse a school zone per Highway Traffic Act. So that was something of interest. Obviously, that does also increase the penalties associated with speeding in those areas, too.
Thank you, Counselor Kado.
Just in terms of direction, I don't know where the rest of council sits on this. With, you know, Counselor Schwint's concern on Arthur Street noted, I would be in support of taking this approach, looking at the urban centers. I think that what this council really wrestled with is what was happening on our roads outside of our urban centers, how those speeds have kind of fluctuated up and down, and I know that that's being addressed through the regional strategy. So I don't know where the rest of council sits, but I would support the approach to the urban schools.
Yes, thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs up? Okay, I think you've got consensus, or at least almost consensus, yes, okay. We have consensus. Thank you. There is no unfinished business, and our first item of business is engineering services for the Victoria Street North sanitary pumping station upgrades, and I will call on Daryl Schwartz and Truver, Engineering Project Supervisor, Mr. Schwartz and Truver.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Shans, to council. I'm excited to present IS 10 2025, which is a report recommending Tatham Engineering Limited be retained for project initiation, design, and tendering for the Victoria Street North sanitary pumping station upgrades at a total cost of $241,420.51 after HST rebate. The Victoria Street North sanitary pumping station is located at the corner of Shirley Drive and Victoria Street North in the city of Kitchener, immediately west of the Grand River. Sanitary sewers from Bresla flow into the Bresla Wetwell and then are pumped into the Shirley Drive Pumping Station. The station is owned and operated by the city of Kitchener through a cross-border services agreement with Kitchener. Woolwich has allotted 50% of the station's 378 liters per second capacity, which is 189 liters per second. Currently, the Bresla Wetwell only has capacity of approximately 96 liters per second, so upgrades are required. Upgrades may consist of an expanded or new wet well, new pumps, process piping, and controls and programming. The work will also include the installation of a one-hour emergency storage tank to meet current standards to provide redundancy to the system. Through the cross-border services agreement, the township is responsible for these upgrades. Staff issued a request for proposal for engineering services and received three submissions. An evaluation team consisting of two Township Infrastructure Services staff and one city of Kitchener staff reviewed and scored each proposal in compliance with Woolwich Council's approved evaluation model. The proposal received from Tatham Engineering Limited achieved the highest overall evaluation. Township staff are familiar with Tatham, but not specifically their wastewater team. Township staff contacted Tatham's references and determined they were satisfied. The 2025 capital budget identified $250,000 for this project. Tatham's proposal totals $241,420.51 after HST rebate. Other anticipated costs are estimated at $67,500. These costs include permitting, GRCA, MECP, and DFO, a geotechnical investigation to confirm bedrock elevation and to meet excess soil regulations, daylighting of existing utilities, environmental assessment, consultation, and advertisements, and township staff costs. All estimated costs are approximately $310,000, resulting in a deficit of approximately $60,000. This project is being funded by the Wastewater Development Charge Reserve Fund. The fund is currently in a deficit, so inter-fund borrowing is recommended from the Public Works Roads Development Charge Reserve Fund to fund this project. This portion of the project is anticipated to begin shortly and be complete in February of next year, so the entire $310,000 is not expected to be spent in 2025, but will be by February 2026. Township staff will be requesting additional funds in the 2026 capital budget for the construction phase of this project. In conclusion, township is recommending Tatham Engineering Limited be retained for engineering services for the Victoria Street North sanitary pumping station upgrades. The Director of Infrastructure Services and Director of Financial Services and myself are here to answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counsel, questions? Counselor Kado?
More a comment than a question, but I'll see if I can get a question out of this. I don't think that we have much of a choice but to fund this. I guess my concern rests in where we're pulling the money from. Our reserves are already low, so I was hoping maybe the Director of Finance could walk us through his vision of how we're spending money here.
Mr. Lynn?
Through you, Mayor Shans, to Counselor Kado. So this was a concern, one of the issues that we have even in our capital budget, we identified this as development charge funding, but we didn't do a full kind of reserve forecast. This is a sanitary work, so it would normally be funded through DC sewer reserves. Our reserve balance as of 2024 is minus 2.3 million, so we don't have any funding in our sanitary DC reserves. So as I reported to council during the treasurer's statement, what we have to do then is inter-fund borrow. So if we don't have the money in the sewer reserve, we don't have the $250,000 budgeted or the $300,000 that was budgeted. So we're essentially borrowing the 2.3 million from the Public Works, the existing deficit, the roads. So we're essentially borrowing the two point three million from the Public Works, the existing deficit, the Roads Infrastructure Reserve. So we need to use the existing three hundred thousand again to pull from the Roads DC Reserve. The risk of this is then we have less money available for future Roads projects. But I do believe that this is an important project to do and to advance some of the work that's needed. But then the, also the construction cost, future DCs will need to pay for that construction. So this is the design, I believe. So there's a future work that could be involved in the construction of this. So we'll need to get a financing plan together to fund the next stage of this cost.
Councilor Schwint?
So I guess I've got two questions, ones to follow up to Councilor Caddell's. Funds in a deficit now, are the future DC credits, not credits, but funds we receive from development meant to cover this well, or is past DC funds we've collected supposed to cover this?
Now, three Mayor Shants to Councilor Schwint, it is in our DC study, so it is included as a capital cost. And the money that we are collecting should be eventually able to recover that. Part of the, it just takes a while, because first we have to get out of the deficit, and then we have to have a positive balance to, to cover this cost, and there's going to be additional costs. But it would be included in our current DC study and our current rates.
And then follow up to the engineering side of it, are we convinced of this coming years, correct time to do it? I know there's a whole lot of development planned for Bresla. Are we sure they're far enough down the path that this is the right project and won't change before the actual work gets done?
Mr. Schwartz and Trouber, you get the hard ones.
Through Mayor Shants to Councilor Schwint, the RFP was prepared to align with the 2025 capital budget, which showed engineering for this project to occur in 2025, followed by construction in 2026.
So it's in the 2025 budget and plan?
I guess, I shouldn't say this, but I'm less concerned about the budget and more concerned about the practicality. Are we far enough down the road of planning Bresla that we know that designed features we're incorporating is what we want?
Mr. Pupke?
Yeah, three Mayor Shants to Councilor Schwint, absolutely. I think, yeah, for the last, just to give a sense, we've been, we've been contemplating this expansion for at least eight years. And it's not until we recently started doing a really good detailed analysis with respect to flow monitoring that we were able to extend that timeframe to now. So again, I think it's still subject to council approval on that construction. So you will see that, that the, all that council's approving tonight is simply the engineering work to get us to tender. And then we could certainly tender, and at the time of tender award, we could have another conversation, you know, from a budgetary perspective. We would suggest that any time would be a decent time to realize that capacity. We already have the cross-border servicing arrangement with Kitchener that's in place. The only piece we're missing is, is the construction work for us to realize the, the capacity that we've been allotted.
Councilor Bryant?
Thank you. Through you to Daryl Schwartz and Trouber. Is this necessary for the Mad West development? Or do we have capacity for them without going forward with this project?
Sorry, I'll take that if that's okay. Two Mayor Shants to Councilor Bryant. No, they're, it, it, it's just, it's, it's not, no, it's not necessary for them. I guess, I don't want to steal the end thunder here maybe, but we can't approve plans of subdivision without capacity allocation. I think that's the important piece. So Mad West was draft plan approved, there was capacity sign, that's the best way to say it. So you cannot approve a draft plan of subdivision without having capacity available, both water and wastewater.
Anyone else?
I'll move the motion.
Moved by Councilor Caddell, second by Councilor Grant. All those in favor, that's carried, thank you. We have bylaws listed on the agenda. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Councilor Bryant, Councilor Burgess, all those in favor, and that's carried. So that concludes the council portion of the meeting, but don't go away. We're going to take a quick five-minute break, and then we're going to reconvene in committee of the whole with Councilor Bryant chairing, and we will see the rest of our delegations there.
Good evening. We're now meeting as committee of the whole for items that require more debate and discussion. We will not be making final decisions on these items per proposing recommendations for the next council meeting. If anyone in the community has feedback on these recommendations, we encourage you to reach out to staff or submit comments to council before a final decision is made at the next meeting. So we're going to start with the Woolwich Climate Action Plan. First up is Anna Harrison, Climate Action and Sustainability Coordinator, to present the staff report. Anna?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Shants, members of council. Thank you for having me here to introduce, oh, sorry, introduce the Woolwich Climate Action Plan. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank all of the delegates for showing their support here tonight for climate action. Okay. So before I introduce the Climate Action Plan, I want to take a step back to talk about why we are here and the importance of taking action. And then I'm going to review our greenhouse gas emissions targets for corporate and community, then go over the Woolwich Climate Action Plan, including the actions, goals and finances, and briefly end with some timeline and next steps, and then we can open it up for any questions. So why are we here? The growing concentration of greenhouse gas emissions in the atmosphere is causing rapid warming, which is manifesting in higher temperatures, shifting precipitation patterns, and causing more frequent and intense extreme weather events. These trends are expected to persist, posing challenges and increasing vulnerability to our economy, infrastructure, ecosystems and human health. By 2050 in Waterloo region, we are expected to experience an increase in annual average temperature of two to three degrees Celsius and three times the amount of extreme days over thirty degrees, much like we are experiencing. This puts vulnerable populations at risk. We are expected to see forty percent more freezing rain events in December, January and February, causing significant impacts to our homes, buildings and our roads. We are expected to see more intense and frequent large-scale rain and wind storms leading to increased public safety risks and infrastructure impacts, and an increase in total annual precipitation of eight to twelve percent, leading to more localized flooding. For the township, this means costly repairs to infrastructure, more health-related distress calls and events requiring emergency management services, and disruptions to key programs and services. There has been a tremendous amount of work completed in recent years by our neighboring municipalities and partners across the region to reduce emissions and plan for climate impacts. There is, of course, the Transform WR strategy. The region of Waterloo's Community Climate Change Mitigation Strategy developed by Climate Action WR. And the region of Waterloo has just recently published its Corporate Climate Change, Climate, Climate Action Plan, and in 2019, a Community Climate Adaptation Plan as well. Similarly, the city of Waterloo has also recently developed their Corporate Climate Action Plan, and in 2019, a Corporate Climate Change Adaptation Plan. And the city of Kitchener recently developed their two-point-O version of their Corporate Climate Action Plan. And the city of Cambridge developed a Corporate Climate Change Adaptation Plan as well. With the Woolwich Climate Action Plan that is presented today, Woolwich is not only aligning with the city's efforts, but also being a leader for the townships. Now, I'd like to briefly touch on our greenhouse gas emissions targets, starting with the community. The greenhouse gas generated by the community of Woolwich are captured as part of the regional data, which has been calculated by the region and Climate Action WR as part of the Transform WR strategy. The data shows that as a region, the highest greenhouse gas emissions arise from transportation and buildings, followed by agriculture and waste. Woolwich, along with the other municipalities, have committed to reducing community emissions fifty percent by 2030 and eighty percent by 2050. This would take us from a baseline of four point five million tons of carbon dioxide equivalents from our 2010 baseline to approximately nine hundred thousand tons in 2050. As I mentioned in my last update in April, we have been working on gathering community greenhouse gas emissions data for Woolwich, so we can better understand where our emissions come from, and we were able to do this with the help of Green WR. The intent for this inventory is to include other sources of building emissions in addition to natural gas, including electricity, propane and fuel oil, as well as other sources of greenhouse gas emissions such as transportation, agriculture and waste, similar to the Transform WR inventory. In the meantime, we have acquired residential, commercial and industrial natural gas data from Enbridge. In 2024, the community of Woolwich consumed approximately fifty-two million cubic meters of natural gas or a hundred and five thousand tons of carbon dioxide equivalents. In order to reach our target, our first target of fifty percent by 2030, we must reduce this natural gas to approximately eighteen million cubic meters or thirty-five thousand tons of carbon dioxide equivalents. In 2024, the community did reduce our emissions by seventy-five hundred tons of carbon dioxide equivalents compared to the previous year, which is about seven percent. And while the current reductions have not quite yet met the target levels, this continued progress is encouraging and indicates a trend in the right direction. And finally, on the corporate side, we have a greenhouse gas reduction target of twenty percent by 2030 from a 2022 baseline, meaning we must reduce our emissions approximately three hundred and ninety-two tons of carbon dioxide equivalents by 2030, which equates to seventy-eight tons per year. Our current total emissions in twenty, in 2024 were approximately eighteen hundred tons of carbon dioxide equivalents. The Woolwich Climate Action Plan is the first of its kind for the township. It lays out a path forward for achieving our corporate and community greenhouse gas reduction targets, educates our staff and community on the importance of taking action and highlights the many co-benefits that can come from having a community that is less dependent on fossil fuels such as cleaner air, thriving ecosystems and biodiversity, healthier and happier residents, financial savings, and a sense of community where residents can be proud to play, live and work. The plan is unique in that we are focusing on both corporate and community, and we chose this approach as many of the actions are interconnected, and we recognize that community emissions are significantly higher than those of the corporation. However, we believe that as a corporation, we do have an opportunity to lead by example. This five-year plan will allow for continuous action to reach our goals, and it will be revised every five years until 2050 in order to incorporate any lessons learned, best practices, integrate any advancements in technologies, as well as identify, identify any additional actions and additional funding streams. The plan focuses on five main goals. Circular communities, which focuses on reducing waste both at the corporate and community level through education and awareness and adopting more circular waste management practices. An example of this in practice is the new community-wide e-waste recycling program that has been launched recently. Second one, low-carbon infrastructure, which focuses on decarbonizing our corporate facilities and encouraging the community to decarbonize their homes and businesses through education, events and grant programs. Empowered residents, which focuses on equipping our community and staff with the knowledge on how to reduce their emissions, and more importantly, why. As we are at the early stages of our climate journey, this education empowerment is critical. Resilient communities, so along with reducing our emissions, this goal focuses on how the corporation and community can better prepare for the climate impacts that we know are coming. This will be accomplished again through education and awareness, but also ensuring that our infrastructure is able to withstand a warmer, wilder and wetter climate. And finally, sustainable transportation, which focuses on adopting more electric vehicles and ensuring that we have the infrastructure in place to support the needs of our staff and our community, as well as encouraging safe and accessible active transportation corridors so that residents have the opportunity to utilize more sustainable modes to get around the township. Within these five goals, there have been sixty-eight actions identified, thirty-three community actions and thirty-five corporate actions, each with their own timeline and priority. And the plan has been developed collaboratively across the corporation, as well as with our many dedicated community groups. The implementation of the action plan will continue to seek corporate and community involvement and collaboration. The Woolwich Climate Action Plan has been developed in a way that is achievable, realistic and sustainable. A draft budget has been developed using our existing resources, which are the Climate Action and Green Infrastructure Levy, and any available grants. The total five-year cost for implementing the actions in the plan is approximately one point six million dollars. This includes funding for decarbonizing our corporate infrastructure, corporate and community events and initiatives, and a community home energy efficiency grant program. There is also approximately nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars available in grants to support the implementation of these actions. These are grants that we would be eligible to apply for at this time, and we will continue to explore future grant opportunities as they arrive, arise over the next five years. There is no financial request at this time. Any requests will be brought forward to council during the annual budget process. As I mentioned earlier, the plan will be revised every five years. And so this slide illustrates the different versions of the plans over the next twenty-five years and when we will need to meet our targets within that timeframe. So by the end of this plan in 2030, we will need to really, reach our fifty percent by 2030 and twenty percent by 2030 targets. And then at the end, 2050, that's when we should reach our eighty percent by 2050 community greenhouse gas reduction target. And we don't currently have a long-term corporate greenhouse gas reduction target at this time. If the Woolwich Climate Action Plan is approved by council, implementation of the plan will be If the Woolwich Climate Action Plan is approved by council, implementation of the plan will begin immediately. The actions requiring funding again will be brought to council starting at the next budget process. And I will provide an annual update to council in April of each year to report on the progress of the plan and our corporate and community greenhouse gas emissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Questions, council? Mayor Shontz?
Sure, I just want to say thanks to Anna and to the community for all the support and the work that you've done on this. Great presentation, great report. I really appreciate it. Yeah, I guess today's weather sort of speaks loudly to the concern that you're trying to address here. And I know that we've had community groups for decades that have been interested in the environment and how we protect it and work with it. So our job around the council table is how do we, how do we balance our finances and the importance of climate action? And so that'll, that'll be some of our, some of our work as we get into budget. But thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Councilor Schwint?
Thanks, and I like all Mayor Shontz's comments, that reports. Full some lots of year of a lot of work and, and so kudos to you on that. It does beg a lot of questions though, because that's why we've got a room full of people. Start out with, that one point six million dollars you've got in the budget, how far will that get us, do you think, in meeting our fifty by thirty target?
It's a really tricky one to measure. That would depend on the uptake of these actions within the community. It's, it's, I've outlined how we can meet our corporate based on heat pumps and vehicles, but we don't really know how in the community that will be, how much participation we will get in the community. But, you know, certainly if we have projects, like district energy projects that we are able to successfully implement, we can measure those reductions over time. And yeah, it's a difficult one to know exactly how, how much it will, will get us there. But certainly, we can report on those each year. Now that we have the, the Enbridge gas that we'll be able to report on each year, we'll be able to see how much we are reducing.
Councilor Grant?
Thank you, and then I think I saw too as well, within this plan, there is grant opportunities for the public to make to the council or to the municipality to help with their own greening initiatives. So I think that maybe will help with that pickup of the community involvement when it comes to greening actions.
Thank you. Andy, I'm sorry, David?
Yeah, thank you, through you, Adam, chaired the council. One thing I want to bring up at this point, because I think it'd be remiss if I, if I didn't, is, you know, over the last week or so, you know, one of the things that we've been monitoring, because I think council's aware that, you know, the region and area municipalities are trying to work on high-performance development standards. But out of the province, as a result of a report that the city of Toronto staff had tabled with respect to implementing some green development standards, they've been very clear that legislation, you know, that they've brought forward, that they don't want to see any sort of movement on building, construction changes. And we're also trying to get clarity with respect to a follow-up clarification out of the minister's office said, or with respect to site plan control measures. So we at first thought the limits would be with respect to the province saying, hey, you can't make, you can't implement these changes if they're going to have building implications. But now there might be changes with respect to site plan control. Why am I bringing this up? Because I think it's important in terms of Anna's answer to Councilor Schwint. We also need upper-level government support if we're going to change standards and introduce standards. And, and that could prevent changes being implemented as well if we don't get upper-level government support. So that's a new development that's been developing over the last week or so in terms of big questions around whether we're going to be able to make progress with respect to the work that's being done on the high-performance development standards. Because as I said, the city of Toronto brought standards forward, and that resulted in the province providing this clarification, what they didn't want to see. So something to monitor as well.
Thank you. Council, any other questions, comments? Seeing none? Okay, we have a number of delegations for this report. So first, I'm going to call up the Riverside Public School ECHO team to speak to council, please.
We are the generation who is growing up today.
Hi, I'm Annie. I am the generation who sat at the kitchen table for COVID online school and was watching out the window as things got worse. I'm grateful for the people that help and care. I've seen people wearing green shirts going around our town and cleaning up garbage, and this makes me feel happy to see people helping. I care about the earth and the people who live on it and the plastic pollution that is hurting animals who mistake it for food and hurting us because releasing toxic gases into the air. I'm willing to spend hours helping plant new trees and caring for them as they grow. We need plants and trees to survive and breathe. Wildlife needs fresh air and food sources and shelter. People are destroying forests, so we need to plant more. I also would like to see more greenhouses so we can have more local food and plants. I'm hoping for more people to see what is happening to our earth. There seems to be fewer people who care enough to do something about it. If we had more people care, it would be better for future generations. I'm hoping that the leadership of our township will take more actions.
Hi, my name is Daniel. I am grateful for a safe community. My money is safe in a bank. I have a secure home. I have friends and family who will help me when I need it. I care about forest animals losing their habitat because of fires and, and the homes that are being built on that land that may have endangered species. I care about animals having a safe place to live. I'm willing to spend my breaks researching ways we can help the earth, building birdhouses, and giving presentations to other classes about recycling markers, recycling batteries, markers, and using both sides of the paper. I'm hoping for a world to be happy and healthy. I am hoping for our township to not allow building on farmland, wetlands, and forests.
Hello, my name is Charlotte. I'm the generation, but to be careful of what I say and do in case it is recorded and filmed on the internet. I'm grateful for beautiful sunsets and forests. I like to look out the window when I'm going for a car ride to different places so I can see the beauty of nature. I care about air quality because of forest fires, that mean, I mean, we won't have good oxygen for our bodies. I worry that less rain and hot weather from climate change could increase the chances of forest fires starting and spreading and destroying animal habitats and people's homes. I'm willing to bike to school more than getting a ride. I walk to school Wednesday every month. We hand out stickers and encourage people to walk to school, and even the people who dress up as our mascot, Roly the Raccoon, to get more kids walking to school so they could see Roly. We just started trailblazers to encourage people to walk to school more, and I'm a safety leader in my neighborhood. I'm hoping for more people to walk, bike, walk, and bike around town. More bike lanes would make this easier and safer.
Hello, mine is Xavier. I'm the generation who uses lots of devices and technology and electricity and who is growing up dependent on those luxuries. I am grateful for the almighty nature reserve. We're helping Trees for Woolwich to plant trees in Garrett of Buckthorn with our church youth group. It's a nice place to go where it's calm and forested and there are no vehicles. I care about wasting energy. A lot of us younger generations like to use technology and air conditioning. We need to be more aware of global warming and overuse of energy. I'm willing to spend my lunch breaks cleaning up and collecting recycling so that it gets recycled properly instead of being put into landfills. Our grant team collects the whole school's recycling twice each week. I'm hoping for a brighter future with cleaner air and more houses with green energy sources like windmills or solar panels. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Danielle. I am the generation who has and is seeing things like climate change and pollution happen, trusting others to make the best decision for us. I am grateful for adults who listen to the children who want a better future for themselves and others. I'm also grateful for the people who take time out of their daily schedules to help the earth and stand up for our environment. I care about our community and how we will work together to stand up for the oceans and lakes that are slowly dying. I believe that our community has the ability to save our earth by working together. I am willing to spend my free time to stand up for the overuse of salt that causes water pollution. Last year, I wrote a letter with a few others to our school board facilities expressing my passion and concerns for changes in our environment, each of us hoping to make a difference. I am hoping for more education to the community about our environment and more events that can bring us together and connect us. This way, I'm hoping to build a stronger and more resilient community. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Patrick. I'm the generation who will live through the decisions made today by the municipal, provincial, and federal governments and the leaders of other countries. I am grateful for all the people who drive fully electric cars or hybrids because they can travel farther with less carbon emissions and a lower cost. I am grateful for people who shop locally because there are less carbon emissions from carbon emissions from transporting the goods. I care about air pollution and want to make it better. It will be harder for younger generations to breathe and live because of polluted air. We already experience this when we see red haze from forest fires and smog from vehicles. I'm willing to pay extra for carbon tax. As scientists say, by 2030, approximately carbon tax would have the power to lower emissions by twenty to forty percent. Also, if the price is higher for gas, then more people will be encouraged to go electric, and it may motivate scientists to find other energy sources. I am hoping that you all heard my concerns and hope people will be more inclined to open their windows instead of using air conditioning and to put on a sweater instead of turning on the heat in the winter. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jenny. I am the generation who has known about climate change since I was in school four decades ago. I'm grateful to the members of this council who dedicate your time for our community and are open to listening to the voices of children. I'm grateful to past councils for saving Victoria Glen so that my kindergarten students have a place to feel belonging in nature in their own neighborhood. I care about connecting students with nature, helping them to understand that we are a part of and deeply connected and deeply dependent on nature, not above it or separate from it, and that we need to use our voices to speak for those who have none. I am willing to volunteer my time and energy in a variety of school and community organizations in order to promote awareness around environmental concerns and to try to lead by example. I am hoping for this council to prioritize environmental concerns and to consider the next generation and beyond when making hard decisions.
We are the generation who trust you to give us the best chance.
Thank you. Council, are there any questions of clarification for this delegation? Mayor Shontz?
No questions, just thank you very much for, for caring. Thank you for coming back and, and doing this presentation. You know, we need to hear from you. And there was at one point someone who's speaking about leadership and generational leadership, and, and you give us hope. I, I know we have decisions to make, but you have influence. So be sure to use it.
Well, thank you, ECHO team. You can go back. Oh, sorry, did you have a question?
No, thanks. I appreciate hearing from you, and I want to challenge your aspect question. You probably can't answer tonight. But what's one thing we as a township could do to help Riverside School or ECHO team or students that could make a practical difference for the next one or two years to the school? I think if, I know I'd love to hear that on behalf of council, and maybe we could find a way to work together. So that's my challenge or question for you tonight is, what can we do to help you at school?
May I add, don't feel obligated to answer that on the spot. I mean, I think that I can speak for council. We would love to hear responses that you could come up with to that question.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, council? Councilor Cudow?
Well, I have the microphone. I'll just
Keep going.
More of a comment echoing what's been said already. It was a really compelling presentation, all of you. You should be really proud of what you put forth here. And you have a gem of a teacher in Mrs. Sainer. Sorry, it's not Jenny. It's always going to be Mrs. Sainer. You know, the work that you do in the community should be recognized as well, so thank you for that.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you, ECHO team. You can go back to your seats now. Next, we have Connor Erlich, Chair of the Township of Woolwich Environmental Enhancement Committee, Tweak. Please come forward and begin when you're ready. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Shontz, council and staff. My name is Connor Erlich, and I'm the Chair of the Township of Woolwich Environmental Enhancement Committee, or more commonly known as Tweak. I'm speaking today to express Tweak's support for the Woolwich Climate Action Plan, as well as bring forward our eagerness to make progress. Tweak is directed to by council. As Township's Boots on the Ground Committee, Tweak is uniquely capable of performing some of these actions ourselves with the guidance of council. Once the Woolwich Climate Action Plan is approved, we look forward to hearing from council on which steps they wish Tweak to start undertaking. I wanted to keep my delegation short to, to give more of a platform to our, our younger, next-generation delegates here. But I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have for myself or Tweak.
Thank you. Council, do we have any questions for this delegate? Seeing none? Thank you. You can return to your seat. And next, we have Dr. Barbara Schumacher, Ms. K. L. G., and Mr. Claus Bo, Bo, I can't even pronounce your name, Bokosten of Green Waterloo, pardon me, of Green Waterloo region. Please come forward and turn on your video and begin when you're ready.
Thank you very much. I hope someone is going to advance my slides for me when I ask for that. Thanks. Good evening, Mayor Shontz, councillors, friends and neighbors. Next slide, please. Members of Green WR are here tonight to support the Woolwich Climate Action Plan. I'm Dr. Barbara Schumacher. Claus Bokensten and K. L. G. are present with you in council chambers. Next slide, please. I am showing the next few graphs to focus our attention on the trend lines of business as usual, which demonstrate how far off of target our greenhouse gas emissions are. Next slide. This graph of Waterloo region greenhouse gas emissions from 2010 to 2030 shows the track to reach fifty percent reduction by 2030 in the green line. The actual emissions in the black line to 2019 and projected to 2030 in the red line, presuming that we continue doing what we are now. The blue line shows the necessary track to reach our 2030 target, starting now. Next slide, please. This slide is a projection out to our eighty percent reduction target for 2050. Next slide. This slide is the natural gas consumption data provided by Enbridge for the Township of Woolwich. All of these graphs emphasize the work that must be done to bend that projected red line down to the blue line to reach our climate targets. Next slide. The largest contribution to greenhouse gas emissions in Waterloo region is from housing and transportation. The largest contribution to greenhouse gas emissions in Waterloo Region is from housing and transportation. Switching fuel from natural gas to electricity presents a significant opportunity for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Next. Corporate emissions represent a very tiny piece of the overall emissions for the Township of Woolwich. Our residences, our businesses and industries will benefit from climate action created to mobilize action across the whole community. Next slide. This is important because Woolwich is the fastest growing community in Waterloo Region. We need to work towards reducing our emissions even as new developments are built. A focus on housing, both new construction and retrofits will give the biggest impact for reducing emissions. Next. Developers are able to forecast what emissions will be produced at the time they are seeking planning approval, given the energy efficiency of their construction materials and methods and the choice of energy source for heating cooling. An important question for council is how will council reduce emissions by the amount they are approving? Next slide. Setting aside a green climate levy is one of the wise decisions Woolwich council has made in the past. It makes sense to replace natural gas heating and appliances with electric when they break down. Green WR recognizes the opportunity council has to leverage or to catalyze community climate action by incentivizing investment, rewarding net zero builders and facilitating retrofits by building owners. Next slide. We enthusiastically support empowered residents initiatives which are outlined in the Climate Action and Sustainability Coordinators Report. Establishing bylaws is a low-cost action that can be done quickly to signal movement on climate action to the community. Public education will be key. Kay is one of our members who are planning Green WR's public awareness campaign. Next slide. We are interested in the home hardware development with the opportunity to implement vetted existing technologies and research proven high-performance building standards, building efficiency and decrease greenhouse gas emissions. Ask Claus about district energy. As mentioned in the report, the Independent Electricity Systems Operator Save on Energy Grant Program will give the township cost savings while reducing energy usage and emissions. And so our last slide I see is already here. To apply for government grants and big dollar private investment, we need to have a comprehensive climate action plan. And we need corporate leadership. We have the climate action and sustainability position and tonight Ms. Harrison gives us the plan. Thank you. We're ready to work with you. Let's go.
Thank you. Council, are there any questions of clarification for the delegates?
Oh, excuse me, Chair. We have, uh, two other people here. And I think we still have time in our presentation.
Sorry, go ahead.
We're, we're welcome to take questions, but I, I did, did want to say, um, K L J, I live in the, in the city of Waterloo and I'm pleased that Waterloo has done some action on this, but where I think Woolwich has really acing it is having this green levy which allows a stimulus, a stimulus to, to incentivize community actions. And for me, I'm doing this because I have a two-year-old granddaughter and I'm sure a lot of you do too. In, in days like today, I really worry about her, you know, and, and the good news is methane is really a, a threat to our health and, and it's so easy to get rid of that if we, if we stop using natural gas. We can really reduce emissions quickly. Um, and, and for my own self, I, I switched from cooking with natural gas at home because of the health risks and I borrowed an induction cookplate from the St. Jacobs Library. You could do it, borrow it from the Almyra Library to try it out. So there's some great programs that are here and small steps that people can do thanks to these community levies, you know, that, that, that give us a chance to, to move forward.
Maybe just a couple of words on district energy. I had the pleasure of meeting with Mayor Shants earlier and Controller, I don't know. And, and we had a very, I think, a very fruitful meeting discussing district energy. And I certainly hope that you have a consideration for the home hardware redevelopment, which would be an ideal situation for district energy, I think. And basically using waste energy that's available in the community, so no additional fuel required to heat the, the new development. But it requires some long-term planning, so that is where the planning and the financing and the knowledge of, of how to proceed. But I think we've already discussed it in detail, so, but I strongly encourage you to, you know, continue that dialogue and we'd be delighted to help out further if we, if we can.
Thank you. Council, um, Councillor Kado?
I was going to ask Claus about district energy as the presentation suggested, so I'm glad that he touched on it. Thank you.
Any other questions, council? None? Well, thank you. You can return to your seats and we will move on. Thank you. Okay, next we have Sandra Bray of Assuring Protection for Tomorrow's Environment. Please come forward and begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Ooh, yes, okay. Apt Environment, Assuring Protection for Tomorrow's Environment. Actually thirty-six years old this month. You probably won't even born then, most of you. We came about because Uniroil had asked to put in an incinerator and that had just hit the end. We couldn't take it any longer. We had to form a local environmental group. And fortunately, it was in position for about four months because thirty-six years this November, the town water was shut off. The town water was polluted. Okay, so we're here. We have, it's, I, how can we show you this calen- this, uh, calendar? What am I saying? This, um, thermometer? This shows you the situation we're in. There needs to be one of these on every public building before long. This is where we're at right now, Woolwich Township, in terms of our emissions. We're at thirty, sorry, fifty-eight million cubic meters of natural gas being burned, being born, being burned to create emissions. This is where we have to get to in our first year, fifth, down to fifty-three million. This is the baseline, but this is the goal. Okay? So this is huge for us. And what I'm going to be addressing is the use of the green levy fund. I'm sorry, but that's the crunch. And we got to talk about it and it's a mess. Thanks, Randy. Much appreciated. Should we hang it over where everybody can see it? Maybe we should tack it on the wall because we're going out. We'll worry about that later. Okay, so I've launched in, but I have to tell you, you know how much I support you. All right, there isn't one of you that I don't feel something for. And most of the staff that I've had connections with, I just feel we're so lucky. We're really lucky. And I'm sorry we're in this mess, but the green levy fund. I think Ms. Harrison will probably remember the time when the penny dropped for me, which was only about three weeks or a month ago, that you thought the green levy fund was for corporate emission reductions. I'm sure the whale, if you, we were online, could have been heard into the outer atmosphere. I didn't know that. There is nothing that I've seen in writing and there is nothing that I'd ever read that said we weren't working towards all these years, like five or six years to get the transform WR document in place. Good, we signed on to the strategies. All those strategies are about community. They're not about corporate emissions. And then we couldn't have access to that money because we didn't have a manager. So two or three years and thankfully, we've got a competent manager. And then now we can't have the money because it's all going to corporate? It's like, this is just, I'm sorry. It's inconceivable for somebody who's been on this and working on this for decades. Well, decades, yes, decades, I guess. In our opinion, the original thread of the use of this fund has been lost. And I talked to the former councillor and yes, he says the same thing as what most of you are saying, that your understanding was that it was for corporate. It's not written there anywhere. I think I sent you a copy of the bylaw or sorry, of the motion and it says very clearly, transform WR strategy as the community climate mitigation strategy. To implement the strategy for actions and strategy, advocate for provincial and federal support. That's the job of the corporation, not to spend the money on those kinds of projects. Greenhouse gas emission reductions by immediate local actions. Council commits a hundred thousand dollars from the original levy collection to support community climate strategy. Like, what are we to think? I don't know. I don't know. So the transform WR document's all about community. There's no mention of corporate emissions. The municipal responsibilities in that document have to do with policy statements, advocacy to senior levels of government, public transportation, waste collection and division diversion. And the green levy motion definitely says it's to carry out the transform WR strategies in the community. So we have a mess of very confused expectations. You've got a community that's been engaged and concerned for a long, long time. And I don't know how we were supposed to know you were thinking differently. The one lesson I would take from this is communication, communication, communication. Because when I talk with you, I'm talking with you largely about community. And I'm sure when you're talking amongst yourselves, you're talking largely about corporate. And guess what? We've got two silos now and we've got a fund of four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And out of that fund, okay. I think it's seventy-seven thousand over five years for community. You expect us to move that with seven, a fund of seventy-seven thousand dollars, then it's like into the million for the little, wee, tiny? Our, our down, the, what we have to pull down is thirteen thousand, oh my God. Thirteen thousand tons. Yeah, sorry. I go from emissions to consumption. Thirteen thousand tons of community emission, of community, uh, emissions. The corporation has to bring down seventy-eight. Like, how, how can you possibly, can? I know how you can possibly, I know how you can possibly consider. Okay, so that's the one minute? Is that what that is?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, you've got my, um, we got seventy-eight. Oh man, I don't like doing this. All right. The amount of money out of that fund so far that looks like it's being designated to the community is seventy-seven thousand five hundred. If you add up the remainder that goes towards the corporate commission, corporate emissions, is eleven times greater. The community emissions are a hundred and sixty-five times greater, the job to be done. And the corporation gets eleven times greater in terms of money. So we think the money should be used to catalyze projects in the community. One of the students said, Council Schwenk, you asked about what, um, the students could do. One of the things they mentioned was increase public events. Well, according to the climate action in public events, number of public events plus two per commercial every year. Like, it's not growing. I don't know. Do you want me to stop?
It's your seven-minute warning.
Oh, thanks. Okay, all right. So I gave you lots of ideas in my previous, uh, submission for this particular evening. You've got lots of ideas of things that we can do. If we had some funds to do it, that would jettison and start moving things forward. We need to set this community on fire to get this, I mean, terrible, sorry. We need to like get a lot of enthusiasm and knowledge going because people don't know this. If you asked anybody if there's a green levy fund in the community, they'd say, what? No communication. People don't know. So the things that Apt Environment is asking for, just to make sure I get this in. Apt Environment recommends council accept the Woolwich Climate Action Plan and thank you, thank you, thank you. And thank you to facilities. Read that Conservation and Demand Management Report from two thousand and nineteen. They've been bringing stuff down, bringing down emissions admirably, like hundreds of thousands of emissions a year. That's the two thousand and nineteen one. I haven't read the two thousand and twenty-four. I don't think it's out yet. Apt recommends that the council ensure the green levy fund be directed solely towards reducing community emissions. Period. Apt recommends the council direct the Climate Change and Sustainability Coordinator to prioritize strategically reducing the community greenhouse gas emissions. Apt recommends that council direct within six months that at least three greenhouse gas emission reduction initiatives be structured and launched. Apt recommends that council direct that within six months also, the Climate Change and Sustainability Coordinator adopt and implement a structure for community participation on project selection, progress and assessment. It's our feeling that if the community was involved more, that there would be ways to, um, select from the possibilities that might be available to us that would be more suitable and also provide contacts and connections to help ensure the success of those, uh, projects. I don't know what you're going to do with this. My heart goes out to you. It's a mess. But I don't think you can leave us sitting with seventy-seven and a half thousand dollars.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for this delegation, Councillor Kado?
Thanks, Chair. Through you, uh, to the delegate, I appreciate your passion, understand your frustration. Uh, we've had many conversations. In your submission though, you mentioned six catalyst buckets. I'm wondering if you could just briefly go through those. And maybe when you do, which one do you think would have the most impact? If you had control of the purse string of the four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars tonight, what would you do in terms of one of those six catalysts?
Okay, so one that I really like and I think, I mean, we could even do it with just our budget, but we could probably get federal dollars to go with it as well. We're sitting with four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. If we took a hundred thousand dollars of that and with a builder did a pilot of having four row houses, solar panels, net zero ready, okay? And those, the people who buy those houses know that they're going to be paying a premium because they're going to have a house that essentially has very little, uh, energy bills. They're going to be future-proofed, which means they're going to be really saleable compared to any other house that's currently being built now. They're going to be more comfortable to live in because they're not going to have any gas fumes in the house and because of the evenness in the insulation. So if the, it's called a local improvement charge, but I know in Mississauga, they've done it as a second mortgage, where the additional funds that it costs. So if we do the, let's say we did the one hundred thousand, let's say it's twenty-five thousand dollars for each of those houses. By the way, the electrical engineer I know says he thinks we could do six. But let's say twenty-five thousand dollars, if they knew that they were paying a premium for that and that they were going to be paying it back on their tax bill a little bit every year for ten years at a fixed interest rate, that's very different than looking at, um, fluctuating prices for energy. It gives them a lot of security and it also means they can pay it off earlier if they want. Um, and if it's paid off earlier, they're sitting pretty with hardly any, they would probably have a water bill still. There might be some, you know, we, they'd have to do net metering, so they might have some electricity still depending on how it has been shaped or how, what the, how big a system they could have compared to what they use. But to do that, also it means that whenever a planning come, session comes to you folks, houses have to be oriented for that. And houses have to have the right kind of roof space or else they can never be future-proofed. Like, and when, but that, that'd be a, a good project. Another, and that wouldn't, that would cost us a hundred thousand dollars first up. And as that's being paid, we could do it again and again and again. And in ten years, you'd have a million dollars rolling over and over and over. It's not huge. It's small and that's, but it's only a hundred thousand dollars. If you do it as, as a pilot study, then you go to our MP, Tim Lewis, and you ask for more or you ask for matching funds. Or you're available and you've already got that done in case there are more grants that come. Another big thing that I would do right away would be to send Ms. Harrison off to Halifax for two or three weeks to try For two or three weeks to train with the people there, they've got that system, it's called Halifax Solar. Where, okay, here's how that works. It costs the municipality one person to administer it. And what they do is they had to take applications from up to 500 homes who want to have solar on their house. These are like retrofits, so this isn't brand new. And want to have solar on their houses. And they do the investigations and figure out which houses have the right orientation, the right kind of roof, all that stuff. And they accept, well, I guess they take more because they accept, at the time I saw, 500 houses a year. And they do a massive bulk purchase of solar panels. And those solar panels come in and the people who own the houses get to choose from a list of qualified installers. They get that all set up in advance. And then, and if there are any additional federal funds, which there sometimes are for solar panels. The homeowners can take advantage of that as well. But in order to pay for those solar panels, they pay at a fixed interest rate for 10 years. And after that 10 years, they have free energy. And the fixed interest rate guarantees them that their energy costs aren't going to be flying all over the place. And that's a really good one because it does a lot of houses. But, and that we would need a federal grant to get started on, I think, because that's such a big one. But those kind, that would be a really good one. Thinking of something on a smaller level. Like, I'm with the, I'm with the students, we need more public events. And I know like we were doing, Ann Roberts was doing seven a year for a couple of years there. I mean, that was way too much given her other responsibilities, but we're down doing, down to three. And then the plan calls for two to three. Like, that's not enough. We've got to be able to do more and find more ways in. Let me see, oh yeah, I like this one too. For anybody in the community, let, we can find out who's putting in an air source heat pump. Offer them $1,000 from our fund to put in, to bump that even to more energy efficiency in that household. To, towards a hot water heat pump or possibly an induction stove. Or possibly, this is really exciting. 3M has an energy film, I guess it's not just 3M, but it's the biggest one that I know of. They have an energy film which put on double pane windows professionally, preferably. Gives them the energy efficiency of a triple pane window. Now, that's brilliant in terms of a retrofit. And they recommend that apparently, one of our people was at a meeting recently and found out that the best installations are done by trained window cleaners. So, you know, the job of the township could be to pull together some people, five or six, eight or 10, do it for the region even. And get some people trained. And then the bonus, if you put in an air source heat pump, could be that you get your windows turned into triple pane windows by having this kind of a film installation. And those films last for 20 and 30 years, it's not a short term thing. So there, those are some of the options, like that's a small one and then there's some big ones. And I think there are a lot more in between.
And I have no doubt that we'll rely on the expertise of Apt. You, you are, you demonstrate the level of knowledge that our community has and we'd be remiss not to lean into that. So I know that Anna and the rest of us will continue to be in touch.
Thank you, thank you.
Did you have a question, Mayor Shotts?
No, I didn't really have a question, I think Sandra has.
Desapplied, I haven't melted on the spot.
So many ideas, appreciate your advocacy and your, your passion for, for climate and we've heard you.
Thank you.
And we, it doesn't mean we'll do everything.
I know, I know.
I don't want to give you a false hope, but, but you've given us some good, good things to think about as to how we use the finances we have. And how we help to activate the community better.
Yeah, I think that's a big one because you're going to lose a lot of people like me if we don't see something more assertive. Thank you, thanks for being you, every one of you, really. Means a lot.
Well, thank you, Ms. Bray, you can return to your seat. There were two additional letters submitted for this topic, one from the Woolwich Environmental Advisory Committee, WAEC. And one from Donna Bender, they're on the agenda for the record. Counsel, is there any further discussion on this topic or questions of staff at this time?
I don't think there's a motion to accept.
Yeah, it's after this.
You'll make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, any questions before we go on to the motion? No, okay, then. We have a mover and a seconder, any further questions?
I thought I hit the button, but thank you, I, I appreciate everyone's presentation tonight and am quite happy to see this come forward. I do think Barbara has brought some good points forward about the green levy fund and our understanding of whether it is a corporate fund or a community fund. I believe my, my interpretation has always been that it is a bit of a hybrid, that we do have some corporate roles. This was, Anna's position was put in place because we acknowledge that. The side of desk work that staff are doing on climate change and greening initiatives was something that was unsustainable and we needed to have a dedicated role. But I do agree that this should also be largely a community driven initiative. Why it's laudable that we are as a corporation looking to bring down our emissions, we also have to know that we are a part of the problem as well as. The rest of us who are living here, that we all have a role to play, so it can't just be the, the corporation itself. So I would, I'm happy to put, put this plan forward, but I would like to see kind of additional work done on how we can engage with the community. How we can incentivize climate action within the community.
To Counselor Schwint?
Thanks, I'm really struggling on this topic because. I endorse the premise that we need to reduce our carbon emissions, we've got to work on our environmental footprint. There's all these jobs that we need to do. I heard a lot of delegates agreeing with that tonight, but I also heard a lot of different approaches on how we should be tackling this same problem. And I'd have to say that most of those approaches left out the financing part of it. Because we need to do it, but the money side of it, we never think about. Which is a big concern of me with budget coming up way too soon. And I also. Struggle with the report somewhat because we're asking the community to reduce their emissions by 50% using a 2010 baseline. We as a corporation, much smaller plot, we are going to use a 2019 baseline because we know we can't meet the 2010. So we're asking the community to do more than we, the township think we can do. So that makes me think that we don't have realistic expectations. And anytime you go into something about realistic expectations, you tend to do bad things. So I think as a township, a council, we need to really think about this 50 by 30 and 80 by 50 target. Is that really what we want to be doing? I know we want to, but is it achievable? And, or do we need to look at prioritizing things differently? I mentioned it's a limited pot of money. We've got to make the best use of that dollars. And I see 38, I think, different proposals on one side, 35 on another, they're all laudable. Projects. I think it's kind of scattered though, so I'm not afraid, I'm afraid we're not going to do any one of them very well. And I'm also really worried that we're going to spend more time administering our projects and we're actually accomplishing goals. So I think we as a council need to really think about this. It's easy to endorse the plan and spend our levy and $1.6 million over the next five years without moving the needle. Or do we need to really critically analyze what our priorities are that will move the needle? Still spend that money with the community's endorsement and make a difference. So at this point, I'm struggling endorsing a plan because I'm not convinced we can do it effectively and make a difference.
Counsel, any other comments? Counselor Caddo?
Thanks Chair, through you to the rest of council. One thing that was noted in one of the delegates' presentations that hasn't been touched on today, I think it was listed as the elephant in the room, that being the CHP. Unless this council is actually willing to, you know, look at paying out. $158,000 per year, and I guess there's a question there, is the energy cost that's associated with that, is that over and above? What we would be paying in energy to run this, the power plant? And I don't know if anybody here can answer that, but. Thomas?
Through you, Mayor Shotts, Counselor Caddo, so that's correct. So the CHP was purchased, it was a 20 year purchase. So we owe, if we're to pay it off over the next 15 years, because we're just almost through five years. That, that buyout is approximately $80,000 per year. And then the additional 82,000 is our additional cost to revert back to greater use of electricity versus natural gas. From the CHP and generating electricity. So, so I guess the additional costs over and above status quo is really just the $82,000 annually. Moving forward, because we've purchased the CHP and that's not something that we can, you know, get out of at this point in time, right? We need to pay off the unit, so.
I guess it didn't want me to follow up, okay. So we're going to be on the hook for close to $160,000 per year for the next 15 years?
Correct, if we, yeah, plus, plus, you know, inflation, but yeah, over the next 15 years, if we were to. Shut off the CHP or decommission it and get rid of it, yeah.
Thanks, so I guess this council needs to make a decision on whether that money could be better spent on other projects, other initiatives. Or whether we bite the bullet and pay what would be about $1.5 million over 15 years. That's between a rock and a hard place, if you ask me.
Mayor Shotts?
Thanks, I think. You know, it's difficult to, to set goals that you kind of throw out there and say we're going to aim for something. I also agree, we have to be really careful that it doesn't become our only goal at. At the expense of, of everything else. And so I, I think we do, I agree with you, we need to look at how we balance something like the CHP. And, and. I don't know, do we do it with solar panels on the roof? Do, like, are there other ways that we can? Can? Help offset some of our carbon use? I don't think after five years, sort of throwing that out would be the right way to go. I think that'll be part of our budget discussion, but I think to Counselor Schwint's point, I, I've thought a lot, because you've said this before about the, the 50 by 30 and. And 80 by 50 and, and can we meet it? Or do we revise our targets? And I don't mind having a really stretched target. I just think we need to be really careful that it's not the only target. Because we could do the CHP, it would cost us a lot of money and we would meet our target. But I don't think that would be the right decision. So I'm not. I'm not sure where, where I'm going exactly with that. Except to say, I don't mind leaving the 50 by 30 and the 80 by 50 in there. And we will do what we can to meet it, I think that was always the, the intent. Anyway.
I think that's. A big difference for me, it's easy to have a stretched goal, but if. We as a township and staff take that goal as that's what we have to do and make decisions based on that. Without taking other factors into account, we get into trouble. And so that alleviates some of those concerns. Like the gas plant needs a nonstarter to throw away what was technology and the environmentally friendly thing to do five years ago. Now we're taking out, things change, we learn more, make decisions at the time they're best for the community.
I, I, I guess along that line. This is a goal for this, this particular. Objective, right? We have other goals and one of them is to keep the taxes in line, right? So we've got a number of goals and so our job as a council is to take all those pieces. And connect the dots and, and make our decisions accordingly. So I, I don't, I don't ever think that we will make all our decisions based only on this, but it will guide us in some of our other decision making.
Counselor Caddo?
Thanks Chair, just Ms. Anderson did a wonderful job in this, so don't read into this question too much. But when we're looking at the climate action reserve balance and it's going from $400,000 in 2025 to under $50,000 in 2029. I'm wondering in operational costs, is staff salaries included in that? So is staff salaries over the next five years proposed to be coming out of that green levy fund?
Yes, staff costs are included within that budget.
Any other questions or discussion, Mr. Brenneman?
Yeah, just, I want to, I want to weigh in, Madam Chair, just on a couple of points, which, you know, because these have come up, you know, and, and senior management preparing for the discussion tonight. You know, when we really try to simplify this and boil it down in terms of. You know, whether you look at why the greening levy was created or why we had advocated for a dedicated position. You know, it's the fact that it was important to advance action. And, and to have a go forward plan. And why I bring that up is because we, we can definitely get caught up in, well, what are we going to do about the CHP? But then that's going to take us away from what tangible actions do we need to start moving forward now to make a difference? You know, from, from that standpoint. As well, you know, I think ultimately that. From a, from a budget standpoint, you know, one of the things that I think Mr. Lynn can speak to is. You know, at times we, you know, we've been talking around the, the council table about the fact that. It'd be, we've been struggling with making sure we're bringing forward things that we can afford from a sustainability standpoint. I appreciate tonight, there's debate about whether. You know, some of these things are the right actions or not and, and how that funding has happened. But right now, what we do have is, is a plan, you know, on, on paper. To bring forward actions that right now, from a sustainability standpoint, do balance out. And I guess I would conclude with this. As senior management, one of the underlying things. That, that we also didn't want to get caught up in. Is you can also get caught up into Counselor Schwint's point, the 80 by 50 into 50 by 30. But I'm reminded tonight, the night I remember being here for the vote, you know, for the 80 by 50 and 50 by 30. It was Counselor McMillan at the time that said. Okay, we just approved this motion tonight. But do you know what we approved in terms of the dollars and cents and the funding that's going to be required to move on these actions? However, you know, you need to be careful not to get caught up in that in the sense of, to Counselor Schwint's point. Is it, you know, will we be able to hit things perfectly? I, I think it's been well documented that a lot of the, the cities even say that, you know, they're going to have difficulty meeting the, the initial target. And things of that nature, so I conclude by saying, I think. Senior management in support of, of Ms. Harrison wants to note to council, the most important thing. Coming out of anything is action forward. And the plan, you know, is designed to do that. And, and I would also be remiss if I didn't conclude by saying that. Some of the, some of the actions that are in the plan actually do not require funding. They require, as I said earlier, changes in, in, in legislation at upper levels of government. Without that support, as I said earlier, some of the real change isn't going to be able to be happened. Especially as I, as I alluded to earlier on, changes with respect to green standards and development standards and, and things such as that. So. As I said, the most important thing we reflected on is, yeah, we could go down the road of definitely, we understand why. Get caught up in the CHP, there's real discussions. We can definitely have real discussions on, is it realistic still that we're going to meet those original targets, et cetera? But I think, as I said, the most important thing before us is. We asked for resources to take the strategy and develop some plan to start moving us forward. And we can debate whether we need to be more aggressive or not, but the most important thing is. Uh, and we can debate whether we need to be more aggressive or not, but the most important thing is that we move forward in some way, shape or form. So that's all I have.
Okay, any other comments, council? No? Okay, you have a motion on the floor, it's been moved. I'm gonna call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That would be carried. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have proposed fireworks bylaw. We have Christian Kufaro Municipal Law Enforcement Officer to present the staff report.
Uh, through you, Chair, thank you, uh, and thank you, council, for having me here. Um, I am here today to provide you with an update on the review of the, uh, fireworks within the township as well as across the region. So our current fireworks bylaw does not have any restrictions surrounding the use of fireworks within the township. Uh, there are no set days or times in which someone can set off fireworks. Currently, Woolwich is the only township within the region that does not actually outline specific dates or times in which fireworks can be discharged. Primary focus of our bylaw is on the sale of fireworks. Uh, they can be sold within six days leading up to Victoria Day and Canada Day with a license. With council's direction, I participated in a regional working group with, uh, which included the three cities and four townships. Uh, the group discussions focused on issues, uh, each municipality is experiencing regarding fireworks. While the issues varied, the groups worked together to create a bylaw consistent across the region that would provide an appropriate balance to allow residents to enjoy fireworks, reduce nuisance and mitigate impulse purchases. The group agreed to recommend to each council, uh, to align on the dates and times fireworks can be discharged and restricting the storefront sales of fireworks. Uh, there have been questions about, uh, during the group discussions, there were questions about banning fireworks entirely. Um, we did discuss, uh, full ban, um, but we did not feel it would be supported. Uh, municipalities that have banned the use, uh, and sale of fireworks have found that bans are effective, but they take time and they take education. The number of complaints decreased the longer the ban has been in effect. Uh, those municipalities with bans also provided alternative options for residents such as drone shows or municipally-run fireworks displays. The last public fireworks displays from the township of Woolwich was held, uh, in twenty twenty three and it was put on by a community group. A region-wide survey was held, uh, for a two-week period in February twenty twenty five. Results of the survey showed, uh, almost four hundred responses region-wide, with two hundred and forty-four of those responses coming from Woolwich Township. Based on the responses of the survey, residents indicated there are not enough regulations surrounding fireworks and they would like to see additional restrictions. Uh, some common reoccurring themes as a result of the survey, based on responses, indicate that residents find fireworks to be noisy and very disruptive, as well as harmful for the environment, stressful on livestock, wildlife and pets. That they can be triggering for those living with PTSD, uh, mental health challenges or those who have auditory sensitivity. Other themes included on fireworks, in a more positive note, uh, did indicate that they bring the community together. They are tradition and they are a way to celebrate. Um, others, um, comments to note was, um, increasing of fines and requiring permits um, for private displays, um, that were included in the results. As part of our research, the group did meet with a representative of the Canadian Fireworks Association, uh, to get their perspective on the industry. They were not supportive of any kind of ban relating to fireworks, as they do not believe them to be effective. Uh, they are believers in education for both retailers and consumers, um, being the best approach. Um, the city of Kitchener and Waterloo have both increased their, uh, the restrictions and banned storefront sale of fireworks beginning in twenty twenty six. Uh, this is consistent with the working group recommendation. However, the townships of Wilmont and North Dumfries have decided not to ban storefront sales, but they have increased their fines and time restrictions. Cambridge deferred their decision, uh, to late summer to align with updating their noise bylaw. And Wellesley is making their decision tonight, so that is to be determined. Uh, staff are recommending the fireworks bylaw be updated to meet the needs of the residents, but the key will be in finding the right balance. Uh, the fireworks bylaw that has been drafted includes consistent restrictions on, uh, times and days of use, increased fine and banning storefront sales. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions? Councillor Caddo and then Councillor Grant.
Thanks, Chair. Um, through you to Ms. Kufaro. Uh, first, I appreciate the complexity with this one. Uh, I'm just wondering, could some of the concerns be addressed in our current noise bylaw? Especially if we're looking at time restrictions. Um, I guess the specific question is, what time does the bylaw come into effect, uh, with some of that noise?
Through you, Chair, to Councillor Caddo. Uh, currently, our bylaw, our noise bylaw, um, reverts to or tells you to kind of revert to the fireworks bylaw, which is currently in effect. So between our noise bylaw and the fireworks bylaw, there are no current restrictions around when fireworks could be discharged. Uh, if it was something that we were to implement in our noise bylaw, the timing would be a little bit different. Um, because during the week, you're allowed noise to, say, nine P M. Whereas Fridays and Saturdays, you're allowed noise until eleven P M. So we would have to take into consideration what dates the holidays would fall on in advance and try to accommodate that, because in the summer, as you know, it doesn't get dark sometimes until ten P M. Whereas in the fall, it does get darker earlier.
Hence the complexity behind this, right? Um, I noticed that there was different times for different holidays. Um, was there a reason for the inconsistencies?
Again, it fell to, through you, Chair, to Councillor Caddo, uh, it fell to kind of the seasons. So with some of the holidays, such as the Lunar New Year or Dwali, um, again, it gets darker earlier in the fall and winter. Whereas with Victoria Day and Canada Day, it doesn't get dark until well after nine thirty.
Uh, if I may, um, I know that the working group had the intentions of having a consistent approach across the regions, uh, across the region, sorry, but we're not seeing that now. Um, and I guess a, a comment that I would have is, I don't know that banning the sales is actually going to address a lot of the concerns that you brought up with the noise, with the pets, PTSD, because people are still entitled to light off fireworks on their property, right? They would just have to go to Centre Wellington or Drayton or somewhere else to buy them online. Um, so I feel that it's, it's unfairly penalizing some of our stores, um, in favor of, you know, going to other communities or, or buying online. So I, I'm struggling with this one a little bit.
Councillor Grant?
Thank you. Through you to the rest of the council and to Ms. Kufaro. I, I asked this question a little earlier of you, but I kinda like to bring it up again, just, um, to walk, walk through. But could you provide some additional clarity on a obtaining a permit? I believe that's really just for like a public event and not necessarily for a resident who's looking to set off a display within their home or, well, within their property, not within their home.
Through you, Chair, to Councillor Bryant. Oh, sorry, Councillor Grant. Um, so currently, right now, our bylaw does require a permit for professional or, um, professional displays where you're using a higher grade of firework. Permits are not required for the lower grade, lower risk consumer fireworks that could take place on private property. Uh, implementing a permitting process was something that we had discussed through the working group. Um, but we felt that the enforcement of it would prove to be difficult. Um, now, a part of the permitting process too does require that, um, approvals of permits and displays because we are dealing with explosives has to come from the fire chief. Um, so any type of private display, um, applications would have to go through directly our fire department. Who would have to review a list of inventory of the products, um, to ensure that they're being stored properly uh, and that they're using actual permitted legal, um, fireworks that are allowed within, obviously, Ontario. Um, so that would put strain on the fire department to be able to follow up, um, with the number of applications they could potentially receive. Um, the other difficulty that we have is that, um, we, the coverage that we provide, officers obviously do more problematic days, adjust, deflect, to make sure that there is someone out, um, to enforce and be available, visible to the public on those issues. Um, but majority of the time, um, when we do get complaints, by the time the officer arrives, the fireworks have already stopped. Um, between, uh, now and twenty twenty four, we received twelve complaints in relation to fireworks. Of those twelve complaints, only two provided actual offending properties. The remaining complaints were, um, either anonymous, um, or generalized, so that again, by the time the officers got there, they couldn't witness anything firsthand. Um, while out and about, obviously, they would still speak with any individual they did see and educate as best as they could. Um, without more information, um, there isn't much we could do in the way of recourse.
Thank you. And I, I completely understand kind of the enforcement gap there and putting additional strain on, uh, the fire department. I do wonder if per, uh, we were to implement a permitting request for, um, residents, if it would give a better idea for those when and where for when we do get complaints, that you have a list of properties that have permits, so you have a general idea when you get those kind of anonymous complaints. Um, I don't know, again, from an enforcement standpoint, if that would provide, uh, if that would really address the gap of enforcement. Um, one thing I did wanna ask as well as another follow-up is when we have a burn ban, and appreciating you may not be able to answer this, does that include fireworks or does it have to be a separate stipulation? Um, I'm also wondering on things, like, we may not have a burn ban, but if there's a high wind event that the risk of embers, um, traveling or any sort of, uh, thing like that, if, if there's a process in place for us to kind of place a ban on fireworks.
So in the proposed bylaw, there is a section that, um, in the event of, uh, a ban, a, a burn ban, uh, inclement weather, or if there is a risk to, um, safety or the community um, deemed by the fire chief, then that would indicate that fireworks could not be discharged at that time.
Councillor Schwint?
Thanks. I think Councillor Grant just hit on my big thing was, if there's a fire ban by the fire chief, I believe that should include fireworks. To me, that's intuitive and makes sense. When I look at the rest of the proposal recommendation, I think we're leading into something where there's gonna be a whole lot of effort, a whole lot of cost to the township with no net benefit. So I can't get behind more regulation, more permitting, which will be a net loss and would, in fact, be further than school.
Councillor Grant?
Thank you. Through you to us, council. I agree with Councillor Caddo on the banning of fireworks. I think the banning of sale really is, if you want fireworks, you will find a way to get fireworks, is kind of my feeling. However, I am in support of s- kind of the timeframes and when and where they can be set off. Um, I think sometimes the lack of complaints that we may get is from a lack of knowing of what is allowed. Um, in a separate incident, I had a resident reach out and ask, what is the rules around open burning? Um, because she didn't know if she could complain or vacation for making that complaint. So I think by having those kind of rules in place gives residents the ability that when they are feeling that fireworks are detrimental to their, their nights or their evenings, that they have a, they have a mechanism to basically have a complaint come forward and know what the rules are. So in that case, I, I would support the, the days, the limits on days and times.
Thank you. Any other questions? A few delegates for this report tonight as well, so I will first call on Priam Viis, who will be here virtually to speak to council. You may now turn on your video and your microphone and go ahead.
Uh, can you hear me properly?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, uh, mayor and council members. My name is Priam and I'm a local fireworks operator in Waterloo region for many years, always in compliance with municipal as well as federal regulation. I'm here today to express my concern about the proposed ban on the sale of fireworks in the township of Woolwich. I understand the concern behind this proposal, whether it's noise or community disturbance. But respectfully, I believe banning fireworks sale is not the solution. It's a shortcut that doesn't address the real issue. Let me begin by stating clearly, I support safety, I support reasonable regulation and guidelines. What I do not support is a full-blanket ban that unfairly penalizes responsible vendors and law-abiding citizens while doing little to prevent illegal or unsafe use of fireworks by those who ignore the rules anyways. I fully understand and respect the concern around the fireworks, the noise complaint, safety risk, property damage. These are real issues and as a responsible vendor, I share those concerns. That's why I believe the path forward is not prohibition, but smart regulation, education and enforcement. Because banning legal sales will not eliminate fireworks use, it will simply push it underground. Residents will still find ways to get fireworks from out-of-town stores, unregulated places on reserves, online market, or even illicit sellers. And when that will happen, we will lose all controls, no safety instructions, no quality assurance, no guidance on local bylaws. When customers buy from licensed vendors like me, they are purchasing a product that meets the highest national safety standards. Something you simply cannot guarantee from unregulated or illegal sources. As a part of my research on the cities who have implemented a sale ban or a complete ban on fireworks, their bylaw enforcement is still struggling to enforce the law. Here's a few examples. I have also provided the news articles to every councillor as well. In the city of Surrey, after the ban took in place, an unregulated and illegal fireworks market skyrocketed. At the end of the year two thousand and twenty-three, city of Surrey bylaw seized over three hundred and forty-five thousand worth of illegal fireworks. I'm a vendor and I can tell you from a perspective that every single vendor in the whole Waterloo region entire year, they do not even generate this much revenue. This is missing from the staff report. Brampton and Calladen complaints are getting higher and higher. And it's now completely out of control. People have questioned the ability of bylaw enforcement. Recently, in Kitchener, after new pilot took in place, a fireworks vendor was assaulted and robbed by a group of people. I also run another location for fireworks in Cambridge. Where every season, I have customers coming from Woodstock and Milton who already have ban in place. They still come to my shop and buy the fireworks. This tells you something. Yesterday, at Oakville council meeting, Mayor Rob Burton says, and I quote, "We can ban all the things in the world, but if we do not have an enforcement plan, we are only pretending. And I don't think people respect us when we only pretend to ban things." Kitchener Mayor, Mr. Barry, says this new recommendation is a government overreach. As mentioned in the report and staff's presentation, North Dumfries and Wilmont council, they have rejected a proposed ban on sale of fireworks. Last month in Mississauga council, council chose not to ban fireworks considering religious freedom and enforcement challenges. As also mentioned in the presentation, Cambridge council have deferred the same proposed bylaw. And Mayor Jen said, and I again quote, "We need to do some more homework." Even Brampton Mayor, Mr. Patrick Brown, tweeted about struggling after a ban on fireworks. Anyways, all of these datas and evidences shows that if fireworks are the biggest issues, our provincial and federal government would have took actions way long ago. Another thing, when compared to environmental damages, data shows way more substantial increases in greenhouse emissions and CO2 emissions through motor vehicle on everyday uses. I also understand and I also understand and concern about fireworks and the temporary effect on wildlife. But let's put it in a perspective, society accept far greater harm to animals every day for food. Those are permanent losses, yet widely accepted. So why signal out fireworks used only few times a year for cultural, religious, or national celebrations? When questions are raised on fireworks and their safety expect, every firework have to pass through an intense examination by National Resources Canada's agency, ERD, Explosives Regulatory Division. When we ask questions like this, are we also questioning the ability of our national regulators? Moreover, as firework industry were hot topic after every season, industry have already started working to manufacturing low noise and innovative solutions. But like I earlier mentioned, every fireworks has to pass through an intense examination by ERD. Every single product takes about six to eight months just to get approval. At the end, whatever decision will be made today will be accepted and followed by all the citizen who respect the name of law and will follow them. While the rogue actors will still continue act bad, we should make strong connection among community, and when communities see such bylaw failing, they lose the faith. We should not punish, punish law-abiding citizens while trying to control bad actors who will still misuse the law. Please let's not put a blanket ban on community celebration, especially in this time where there is so many conflicts going in an entire world. Let's make sure that everyone celebrates safely and not disturbing others' peace, while let's not put additional burden on our staff and residences' taxes. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you for service to our community. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Do we have any questions for this delegate? Seeing none, thank you. You can turn off your microphone. And your video. Okay, next we have Aleem Kanji, virtually of the Canadian National Fireworks Association. So please turn on your microphone and begin when you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to make sure everyone can hear and see me before I begin.
We can hear you.
Fantastic. Can you see me as well?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening to everybody. My sincere apologies for not being with you in person this evening. I'm not too far away from you, but unfortunately not able to be with you in person. And good evening to members of the council and of course to staff that have put together the report that's before you and to them for all their hard work in putting this report together on a regional scale, but also locally for you. As was introduced, my name is Aleem Kanji. I'm here today on behalf of the Canadian National Fireworks Association. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on the proposed amendments on the fireworks bylaw. While we support efforts to enhance safety and address community concerns, respectfully, we submit that some of the proposed changes, particularly the ban on fireworks sales within the township and the reduction of permitted use days are not well informed and in fact may lead to unintended negative consequences. Now, the staff report before you highlights a desire for improved fireworks safety. However, the solution proposed, especially an outright ban on sales, in our experience, is fundamentally flawed. When municipalities ban regulated fireworks sales, they do not eliminate the fireworks use. They simply push it underground. It creates an unregulated illicit market where products are often uncertified, unsafe, and sold without any safety instructions or age verification. This scenario poses a far greater public safety risk to everybody in the Woolwich community than a regulated marketplace. And I should tell you that over 4,000 of these products are regulated by the federal government through ERD, Explosives Regulatory Division in the Government of Canada. We see this cautionary tale playing out in nearby communities. In cities like Brampton, despite the significant enforcement efforts and tripling staff presence, complaints remain relatively high post-ban. This is challenging, if not impossible, to enforce a ban on an activity that simply moves out of sight. How will the township effectively manage and enforce this new underground market? I know councillors talked about time restrictions. I'm happy to talk about that more and also staff's assertion of finding a balance. I think it's a really, really important point. Furthermore, not proceeding with a sales ban here in Woolwich will align with your regional partners, as we heard about in Wilmot and North Dunfries, who have both chosen not to implement such prohibitions. So there will be regional alignment in that respect with your regional, I, I would say similar-sized municipalities respectfully. Now, the proposed, proposed reduction of permitted days to only the specific holiday and the ban on sales will directly impact the cultural and religious traditions of many residents. There are celebrations that are deeply meaningful to residents, but we must find that balance. We are not opposed to what was suggested earlier in terms of time restrictions and tightening up the bylaw. What I ask is, let's work together to help you get there based on our experience in other communities across this country, this province, and this region. To remove the ability for residents to participate in using fireworks, celebrating traditions, including things like Canada, or to force them to travel elsewhere for products, it undermines the very principles, I believe, of equity, of diversity, of inclusion to strengthen our communities and things that this council has talked about in the past. It's also important to consider the public sentiment reflected in your own survey. The report notes that respondents were evenly split when the question of a sale of firework ban was asked. This indicates significant community division. There is not a clear mandate for a full prohibition on sales. Overwhelming support for stricter regulations often means a desire for better management, not an outright ban that curbs responsible enjoyment. And I would say lean into us again to help you establish and determine that. The CNFA, let me be clear, is not here to advocate for a free-for-all. That's absolutely wrong and quite the opposite. We do believe that robust education led by things like our Be a Good Neighbor program and some of our education materials, I've sent those to council for those watching or joining virtually, they're all available at nationalfireworks.ca. And I'm happy to talk about some of them, including the points made tonight around the environment if time permits, because they are important points, and I'd like to address them. But we are offering a three-pronged approach, as I said, oversight, education, and enforcement support, all at no cost to the town or your taxpayers. Through oversight, it will be through our vendor certification and employee trading program that ensures that licensed retailers provide that critical safety information and adhere to all of the best practices. Through education, our Be a Good Neighbor program, I showed that to you earlier, ensures that licensed retailers provide critical safety information and adhere to best practices. And, and that's the oversight and that's the education. We can provide these materials at the point of sale, providing people with the rules. If that includes changes to your bylaw on time restrictions, on different times and seasons, you know, that, that is what we will provide at the point of sale. If we're removed from this community, we can't provide that. And as I've said to folks in Kitchener and Waterloo, you're opening up the red carpet to an underground market. And I think we heard earlier from the other speaker how that's actually happened, very recently. In fact, six days after the announcement was made, even though the ban won't be in place out in KW till January of next year. So to counsel, I say, the trust for you is not between unmanaged use and a total ban. It's between a partnership with regulated industry and creating an unenforceable, risky underground market. A ban will not stop residents from acquiring fireworks. They will buy them online without safety instructions or neighboring municipalities. That's a far greater risk than controlling, pardon me, continuing to allow local regulated sales. We urge Woolwich Council to reconsider the proposed sales ban and the drastic reduction in permitted use days. Instead, let's work together to implement a made-in-Woolwich solution that prioritizes education, regulation, and targeted enforcement, reflecting a balance, as staff said very clearly, and an evidence-based path forward that protects public safety and community traditions. I thank you for your time. I welcome your questions, and I welcome speaking to some of the questions around the environment that were raised earlier in the other delegation as it relates to fireworks, if you wish.
Thank you, Mr. Kanji. Any questions from council? Seeing none? Thank you. You can turn off your microphone and video now, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, members of council.
Thank you. Counsel, is there any further discussion on this topic for staff at this time? No, then there is a recommendation in this report. Is anyone willing to move the recommendation? No? Anyone want to make changes to the recommendation? Counselor Grant?
Thank you. I would like to make some changes to the recommendation specifically to remove from the bylaw the banning of fireworks. Perhaps with the exception of banning of fireworks for those younger than 18. I think that maybe is already a rule federally, but I, I'd be fine keeping that. So I think in the bylaw, that is number 20, number 22, and number 23 under prohibition.
Is that it for you, Counselor Grant?
Yes.
Okay, anyone else, Counselor Cadeau?
I would take it, excuse me, a bit further and say that I would like Woolwich to be more in line with Wilmot and North Dunfries. What that looks like, I'm not sure, because they're slightly different. I'm fine with the increased fines. I'm fine with a no-sales ban. I don't think we have permitted days, though, do we? No, so we wouldn't maintain that. So it would be more in line with Wilmot, restricted times, increased fines, no-sales ban. That's what I would support, with the four days as well, because I note that Wilmot only has Victorian Canada Day listed.
Counselor Schwint?
I guess I'm curious where we're going with this. On two parts, the diversity, inclusion, it's a big part of our township. So we're recognizing some British traditional holidays and Diwali. There's lots of other holidays out there. And I'm thinking of my neighbor getting married last fall. One night, there's a whole bunch of buggies going in the lane, and an hour and a half later, there's fireworks for 15 minutes. I applaud this. We're making life difficult for that person. I'm thinking of family tradition we had when I was younger than the Riverside students. We'd always get together, this neighboring family, have fireworks for May 2, 4. Well, when you're five or six and it's getting dark at 10 o'clock, that was too late for the Monday night before school. So the family tradition became Saturday night or Sunday night, because you could sleep in the next morning. Well, this doesn't always work for all those holidays. So why are we being so prescriptive? I think the goal of the fireworks ban was, if you've got huge events, big parties happening with fireworks and bad things are happening, you want to control that. But don't we have other bylaws, such as a noise bylaw, that can cover those things? So I think we're jumping in something that's going to take a whole lot of staff time, as if you've got permits. Staff personnel spread out the permit, the application fee, sorry, the cost doesn't cover the time. So, and what's the net benefit of the township? So I'd be careful providing too much prescription at great cost. That's not causing, sorry, it's not fixing any problem that we have.
Go ahead, Kristin.
Sorry, through you, Chair. Just to kind of follow up, Counselor Schwint, I don't know if this will necessarily kind of help ease some of that concern. But in the proposed recommendation, I did reach out to Abby Cooper with our multicultural group here in Alira to get her perspective and some input from her as to how we can kind of ensure that we are encompassing all cultures within the township of Woolwich. And in the proposed bylaw, there is a definition that does speak to cultural or religious holidays, which mean, would mean any other holiday celebrated by another religion outside of those that are outlined in the bylaw, which would still permit fireworks, provided those individuals approach the township and explain the reasoning for why it's a significance to them. So there is flexibility on some of those dates.
Anyone else? Comments? Where do we want to go with this? Excuse me. Counselor Grant?
Thank you. I, through you, to us, counsel, I would agree with Counselor Cadeau. I'm, I'm fine with us kind of aligning more with what Wilmot is doing with the increased fines and the limitation on days and time. And then again, the, just the removing of the banning of sales. So I'd be fine putting forward a motion for an amend, amending of the bylaw.
And the amendment is the one that you mentioned to our clerk? Counselor Cadeau?
If it's aligned with the Wilmot strategy, then I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Do we have any further comment, counsel, Mayor Johnson?
Just a question, you're aligning with Wilmot. Are you also keeping in Diwali and Lunar? Yes, okay. Then I, I can support that.
Okay, any further, did you have a comment?
Through you, Madam Chair, can I just clarify a couple things? So I think the motion on the floor from the mover is to amend the fireworks bylaw, direct staff to amend the fireworks bylaw, to remove the fireworks ban and align closer to Wilmot, sort of in terms of the rules and regulations. We can definitely bring that back to council, I think is a short memo, if that's what the mover requested. The other thing I picked up from Mr. Kanji's presentation is he recommended if a ban wasn't put in place, that some additional education and training be for the firework vendors. Was that something that council would support? Okay, I think we can do that likely for the August meeting, if that's, if that's what council would like. I believe I have a mover. I can't remember if that was a second.
Yes, it was.
Back to you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any further comments before I call the question on this then? None? Then I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That would still be carried, three to two. Okay. We're going to move on then. Next item on the agenda, next we have Victor LaBrash, manager of planning, Jonathan Dellicoli, junior planner, housing and MHBC consultant Andrea Sinclair to present the staff report and presentation. Mixed use and mid-rise urban design guideline report.
Thank you, Chair Bryant, members of committee, council, and public. My name is Victor LaBrash, manager of planning. I'm pleased to give an introduction, brief overview of the mixed-use mid-rise urban design guidelines report in, in this regard. Also would like to certainly acknowledge Jonathan's work on this as the main contact through the process and ensuring consultation. Also Andrea Sinclair from MHPC, the consultant that the township retained to prepare and assist us in, in the process, as well as she'll touch on the consultation timelines and milestones that were completed and also provide a brief PowerPoint presentation. I just would note that the town, this council, as part of several initiatives, I think there was 10 initiatives for half funding through the Housing Accelerator Fund, identified 10 initiatives, this is one of them, to complete the mixed-use mid-rise urban design guidelines. The, the guidelines themselves provide an important tool for, again, mixed-use mid-rise proposals and, and higher-density forms of development that the township has been seeing and will continue to see, driven by provincial policy changes, higher-density requirements, affordable housing, and mixed-use compact form developments. They're meant to encourage excellent design that builds upon the township's existing character, is complementary, but will provide further opportunities for creativity. Improving the public realm, encouraging pedestrian-oriented and transit-oriented developments are the goals and promoting compatible infill redevelopment at suitable locations in, in contributing to a sustainable community. The mixed-use urban design guidelines, as I mentioned, were assisted by MHBC Planning, a local planning firm, multidisciplinary, and certainly well-respected in the community and beyond in the planning realms, and has a component of urban design services which Andrea is a big part of. So we're happy to retain them and work with Andrea and the, and the team there. I would note that the official plan for the township, current official plan, does have some urban design policies referred to as the urban and architectural control guidelines. Also, specific ones that are related to the stockyard urban area and just general higher-density considerations and And just general higher density considerations and urban corridor guidelines that are within the official plan, but there was really missing this component of mixed-use, mid-rise, higher-density urban design guidelines that were sort of missing in this regard, and again, one of the initiatives of our half funding. The guidelines will ensure high-quality context-sensitive development and provide the contact with another much-needed tool for reviewing proposals in the future. At that, I'm not sure if there's any initial questions. But I'll then pass it on to Andrea to complete her PowerPoint presentation, certainly having entertained questions after that.
Thank you, council, do we have any questions before we go into the report? No, go ahead, thank you.
Oh yes, oh sorry.
I'm used to being at the podium, this feels very informal. Good evening, so as Victor said, I'm Andrea Sinclair, I'm a partner, urban designer with MHBC Planning, I'm in our Kitchener office, which is the head office of MHBC. And I'm here both in support of staff's report and recommendation and to provide you all with a broad overview of what the guidelines include. And as Victor mentioned, the consultation program that happened as part of this project. So as Victor mentioned, these guidelines formed part of the township's funding proposal for the half-funding. They were prepared in, intended to support intensification, increased housing densities, and complete communities. These guidelines importantly are being prepared not to create new development barriers, but to provide clear direction to result in having some greater variety of scale and different types of development in the township from how the township has traditionally developed over time. In terms of the overall engagement, there has been multi, multiple versions of engagement that were prepared by both MHBC and the township, and Jonathan in particular was instrumental in delivering the engagement program. An Engage Woolwich page was initiated in early September of last year, which had a feedback forum so that at any point over the duration of the project, feedback could be provided through the Engage page. Over the course of this project, there were about two-hundred-and-seventy-four views of this page. There have been two open houses, the first was a virtual open house held in late January of this year. And just after the open house and as advertised, for those who came out to the open house, a survey was then posted the next day, providing an opportunity to provide feedback on the overall vision and what would be the important topics to include in these guidelines. In terms of the survey, there was about fifty-three people who participated and all identified themselves as residents of the township of Woolwich. Following the initial open house, we worked on preparing an initial draft of the guidelines. Those were posted on the Engage page on March seventeenth of this year. And anyone who subscribed to the Engage page, anyone who participated in the first open house, and then identified committees, there was an email list provided by the township at the beginning of the project. Those all formed part of an ongoing email circulation list, so in addition to posting on the Engage page, there were also email blasts every time there was sort of a project update. So the second open house was held on March twenty-seventh, that was an in-person open house in which we had boards available presenting some of the key sections of the guidelines. Oh, sorry, I forgot to advance, I did hard copies of the guidelines for those who want to take some home to review in more detail. As I mentioned, the guideline draft, initial draft was posted March seventeenth, we provided approximately one month to provide comments. In communications with various committees, we also identified if people needed more time, that that would be acceptable and just to let us know if they needed more time to provide comments. Following the feedback received, we prepared the updates and that included feedback as well from township staff and various departments. And then the guidelines were further updated and then reviewed and finalized for council's consideration tonight. Throughout the entire program, there was always open available opportunities for input from township departments as well as various committees. The notices for each open house were posted, not just on the Engage page, but hard copies were posted throughout the township, that was done by township staff. And as I mentioned, there was an ongoing circulation list so that anyone who expressed interest in the project was continuously updated in case they didn't happen to check the Engage page. We met with a number of committees, any of the committees that expressed an interest to meet with us, so that included going to the Heritage Committee, the Grand River Accessibility Advisory Committee, the Development Liaison Committee, and the Elmyra BIA. In terms of these, this type of project, I would say what we typically find is we get the most input, feedback, potentially opposition from developers. The Development Committee did meet with us, they expressed their concerns at the beginning of the project and we received no opposition or no further concerns raised from that group. And then as I mentioned, there were several email correspondence sent out throughout the program. In terms of what we heard, as you can imagine, we heard lots of things, some very related to the guidelines, some not overly related to the guidelines, but this is sort of a representation of some of the things that came up the most frequently in all of our communications, both through presenting to committees, talking with the public. On the positive, you know, a lot of people talked about how much Woolwich is a community and how they want this to be a place that is welcoming and they want it to be a place that people want to live in and stay and be able to age in place. The word height is one of the larger words on here, there was definitely concerns raised about the idea of seeing more height in the township. And it was clearly explained that the city or the township's official plan and the zoning bylaw are really the documents that establish heights and land use, this guideline document is really getting into more, what I would say, the site plan level of detail, so it's primarily a tool that's going to be used by the development community. But notwithstanding, those comments were passed along to staff with some recommendations as they're working through the final parts of the official plan review. Some of the other things we heard is just if there's going to be increased population and more density, just making sure that we don't run into issues with traffic congestion. Parking was raised as a large concern of making sure there's going to be enough parking, of course, any development will still have to satisfy parking requirements of the zoning bylaw. And making sure that there are the services and amenities and things to do in the township to support potential increase in population through these other forms of development. The guidelines themselves were centered around three primary principles. The first being built form, and that's relating to context-sensitive development, so balancing out the existing community identity, but with a goal still to have some increased density and more of a mix of uses. In terms of public realm and circulation, plan future developments that propose or prioritize pedestrians, active transportation, and making sure that these developments really encourage social interaction. And then in terms of landscape and sustainable design, making sure that future development is looking at landscape and ways to reduce carbon emissions, respond to impacts of climate change, and the township's climate change advisor did provide extensive comments on these guidelines which were implemented. And then as much as I'm sure everyone would love me to do a forty-page, page flip of the document, I've just included just some of the key topics that are addressed in these guidelines, so there's guidelines related to built form, actual site layout, lighting, signage, compatibility and height transition, heritage, parking, services, utilities, accessibility, being able to have universal and age-friendly design, climate change, sustainability, amenity space so that there's not an undue pressure on public open space in parks to make sure that larger developments have sufficient onsite amenity for future residents. Looking at things like safety, affordability, and then some additional guideline direction that's specific to Bresla, Elmyra, St. Jacobs, and the newer settlement areas that have been brought into Bresla, and then just sort of a cross-reference to the work that was already done for the stockyards and making sure that that carries forward, so. That's my overview, happy to answer any questions, and thank you.
Thank you, council, do we have any questions, comments? Mayor Johnson?
Thank you, thanks for the presentation, there's a lot in there. I had two things, one was to, to sort of zero in because of the presentation we had earlier and the delegations on the sustainability and climate design, and I wonder if you could sort of highlight just some of the main key pieces in there that, that if there's people listening online that would be interested in, and along with that, is there anything in here about green space as in parkland and part of the reason I'm asking, it doesn't necessarily apply here, but as I see more and more intensification in the cities and less and less green space, I worry about people's health in that regard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, Madam Chair. So I'll start with the first question first, so on the sustainability guidelines, they deal with a number of things, some of those include encouragement to incorporate low-impact development mechanisms into site design, so that can be things like having rain gardens, pollinator gardens. They strongly, they reference the require to have bicycle parking in conjunction with any requirements that are in the zoning bylaw. They look at things like EV parking, using locally sourced building materials, drought-resistant and native plants in the landscape design, so there's kind of a whole list, a number of things factored, and then as I mentioned, that section was really expanded on significantly with the input from township's climate action staff. And then in terms of the blanking out the, the parkland, sorry. It's apparently been a long night, so the township always has the ability to ask for either parkland dedication in terms of land or cash and lieu, and depending on the size of the site, often the land doesn't make sense if the township's only going to get a really small remnant piece that you really can't use a proper park on. So if in cases where cash and lieu is required, then that money is supposed to go to procuring additional lands within the township to provide public parks. But all that being said, as I mentioned, there's sections of these guidelines related to amenity and housekeeping recommendations for the zoning bylaw that would require, and it's fairly common in a bylaw to require a minimum onsite kind of common amenity area, especially on a larger site, so if there's, whether that be rooftop amenity, indoor amenity space, or on a large enough site, some outdoor that, so the residents of those projects are not only reliant on the cities, or sorry, I keep saying city, the township's public parks, but also that there's that recreational and green space available on the sites themselves, so I hope that answers your question.
If I may, I just may add quickly, there's specific sections within the guideline that are, that are titled sustainable and climate-ready design as well as architectural detail, which both get into similar things, architectural detail obviously gets into the building materials and sustainability, locally sourced natural materials, and sustainable climate-ready, kind of go hand in hand with that. There's also section within the guideline on amenity area and site design, so they also go hand in hand, requirements for amenity space, internal, external to the development and site design kind of go hand in hand to ensure, you know, a nice livable place to live.
And I just keep batting on each other. Seen a real shift in the last couple of years in municipalities within this region is a lot of zoning bylaws did not previously, they always had sort of a minimum landscape open space area, but that's often just, you know, grass trees, it's not necessarily amenity. As, you know, the funds to have public park become more and more challenging, the costs associated with operations and maintaining those to a good standard. I'm just seeing more and more zoning bylaws start to incorporate those minimum amenity requirements, and when it's in a zoning bylaw, you know, then it's a requirement as opposed to a guideline, and then what the guidelines do is sort of give direction in terms of if you're, when you're having these amenity areas, this is some of the things you should consider, like making them accessible, using sustainable landscape materials, so that as well, so it's definitely something that I'm hearing more and more at local councils in terms of there needs to be more than just reliance on public parkland.
Thank you, council, any other questions, Councilor Caddo?
Thank you Chair, through you, I'm going to embed myself firmly in the weeds on this question, so I apologize in advance, but on page thirty-four, number five, it says, in relation to St. Jacobs in Elmyra, when selecting materials for new developments within Elmyra and St. Jacobs, developers and designers are encouraged to use historic color palettes. I have no idea what that means, is that like a red and yellow brick, because that would be sad?
It's actually a majority of major paint companies like Benjamin Moore, et cetera, actually have extensive palettes that they consider historic, so it's I guess avoiding things like really loud colors that are, and you know, this is one of those things where it's hard to, I'm really able to say exactly what color a building has to be, but those historic palettes usually give you a really broad range of colors, but just things that were found, I guess, more traditionally throughout Ontario, so it's it's not just limited to one or two colors that might be in this area, it's more getting away from I don't know, colors that you wouldn't have normally seen in a traditional downtown.
Yeah, I just asked that question because I would worry about signaling to developers, for instance, that, you know, when you come to Elmyra, you have to build with yellow brick.
Any other questions? Council, no? Seeing none, you have a recommendation before you, do I have a mover and a seconder for that? Councilor Grant, Councilor Burgess, any further questions? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question, all in favor? And that would be carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the list, we have the follow-up from the first quarter report, so we have Director of Infrastructure Services, Jared Poupay, and Director of Finance, Treasurer, Colin Lynn, and they've got an update for us this evening. You guys can figure out who goes first.
Thank you Chair Bryant, through you, the members of council, prepared the memorandum before you as part of the package, just as an update to council regarding the water wastewater deficit issue, the reserve balance challenges that we've been experiencing, I think what's important to highlight here is I got to take you on a bit of a journey. Oh, I'm sorry guys, did I miss that?
You're on the wrong one.
My apologies, this is not me.
Okay. You were both on the list, so you guys.
Well, Noah, you need to bribe an update on
Snow removal? Yeah. Who's going first then, is it Colin now? Well, we'll start with David.
I, I will, I will help out the team.
Okay, you do it. It's yours.
So, so Colin will speak to the fact that at our last meeting, one of the things that was recognized was the deficit that's projected in winter control. And we had hoped to do some follow-up work for this meeting, but it's going to take longer and he can speak to the things that need to be looked at with respect to that and the timing of reporting back to council. Related there too, you recall council got into discussion with respect to, I think Councilor Schwinn, you had put out several options to challenge staff to look in areas and council endorsed that, and one of the areas was to come back at some time with an evaluation on winter control standards and whether there would be any future adjustment to that, so I think I just need Colin and Jared to speak to, in their respective rights, to So I think I just need Colin and Jared to speak to, in their respective rights to those issues. Colin, if you could speak to the work that we're going to do between now and when we report back to council in August on the projected deficit, further to Counselor Schwint's options. And then Jared, you can conclude with the work that will be required for us to look at an evaluation of winter control standards.
Through you, Chair Bryant. So there are a number of options. Counselor Schwint identified a few different options. One would be a service level reduction in the identified services. So that will take some time to kind of cost out what those service. Winter control, for example, that could potentially happen only in November and December, but we want to take a holistic look throughout the organization. Is there other areas where we could potentially reduce service levels at this stage in the year, over halfway through the year, in order to kind of bring down kind of the projected cost? The other option as well is reserve. So contingency reserves is always an option. We do have that Inova dividend. We also have the HR contingency reserve, which could be a potential funding source for any sick leave or any, any overages, severance, or those kinds of things that we could potentially use as well as the operating contingency. And then there's other capital type of work as well that we could look at. What projects could we potentially delay in looking at that? That's just going to take a little bit of time to quantify some of those options to bring forth to council. We would be intending to bring that before the Q2 report. So some of those options in the next council meeting.
Okay, Mr. Poupay?
Yeah, and through you, Chair Bryant, to council, just regarding winter control and possible reduction. So I think just a quick update on that. It is going to take a little bit of time to review, but certainly we can have something hopefully tangible here, Q3. We're, we're, it's okay to do. I think we've been checked with our insurance provider. I think the challenge is that we need to obviously meet minimum maintenance standards. That's an obligation and a requirement in legislated piece for us to maintain. We exceed minimum maintenance standards with respect to snow clearing operations. I think that's common knowledge and I think most municipalities do. I think Woolwich has a much higher snow clearing standard than any of our neighbors. Case in point is that we do touch Class V and VI roads through every event. That would change. And you can appreciate that we would need date that to those residents that live on those roadways as they wouldn't necessarily see a plow. So that's something that council obviously needs to endorse and be cognizant of as well because I'm sure there would be some concerns from those residents who are used to a certain level of service. Certainly, that's something that we need to prepare for if that's the road we want to go down. Unfortunately, both Clerk Smith and I have been looped into some recent discussions and this came through the insurance pool regarding minimum maintenance standards. So they're looking to further bring municipalities and obligate them to manage corners or intersections. This is a challenge that I think every municipality faces in the winter as well. Case in point would be you have a winter control plow going around a corner and we have a sidewalk, a snow clearing contractor in Elmira, and it's always the battle at the corners and not every snow event is the same. So you treat them very differently, unfortunately, and you end up with windrows. So what has happened in the past is Clerk Smith's group with the Crossing Guards has looked to deal with the clearing of a lot of those high priority locations. We talked this year about contracted service and we also explored the idea of bylawing that in, much like we have done in other settlements outside of Elmira, where sidewalks, no clearing contractors, or sidewalks, no clearing. Obligations are on the property owners who front those sidewalks. We're being informed that legislation is impending and likely be in place potentially this year and is going to put the onus squarely on municipalities. Now, we can deal with that with contracted services. We can deal with that or internal services, but it will be an obligation that we will no longer be able to skirt. So it's something we will have to address is a lot of those pieces. So we are unpacking that as brand new this week that we just heard that. So I think that's important for council to be aware of before we had updated council. I don't even know if we told David this, so this would be the first to hear about this. But anyway, stay tuned. That will be part of the package though, when we talk service delivery and the impacts.
I guess one question I have for Jared first is what's a Class V and VI roadway? Just for clarity for everybody.
Yes. So I don't have the exact data. I could pull that up, but it, again, legislated. So what it takes into account is, is speed and ADT or traffic volumes. So that dictates class of roads. The township only has Class 3, 4s, 5s, and 6s. The minimum maintenance standard, H.O.R.G. 23902, does not obligate the municipality to do any work on a Class VI road. However, the municipal act requires a municipality that they must ensure some form of attention to those roads, but from a minimum maintenance standard. So there's two acts in play for a municipality when it comes to defending claims and doing maintenance. Both municipal acts speaks to Class VI roads or any road in particular. And the minimum maintenance standard really absolves us from certain obligations based on volume and speed. So again, if we have a reduced speed and low volume, less obligation. Higher speed, higher volume, more obligation to the municipality as far as time for which to replace or repair potholes or deal with discontinuities in a road to make it safe.
Can you name a Class VI roadway, just to give everybody some idea of what they would be? Anyone?
No, I can't off my head. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to miss class of road. But I could certainly try to find one in, in the time tonight here. Let's see if I can do that.
Okay.
Challenge accepted.
Yeah, so, so just in summary, Madam Chair, for council's benefit, you know, of the three options, Counselor Schwint, that you had put forward, I think they should be classified this way. With respect to the last item on, on winter control, that I think would fall in the category of how we would potentially mitigate the amount of money that's spent if we were to change the standard. But where the dollars and cents would come to actually address the, the actual deficit coming out of even this previous winter season would be the reality that we've, are searching through each of the departments with respect, as Mr. Lynn has noted, both operating and capital potential opportunities. Just for your benefit, you know, one of the areas that certainly we are exploring on the operating side is with some staff vacancies, there are times you're gapping between hiring and, and filling those positions. However, we also want to be careful that, because we previously reported to council, we have to do a better job in terms of how we're managing our overtime costs and budgeting for those. So we'll have to evaluate those sorts of things. And, and on the capital side, as you noted, we have had some savings. But I'm sure council wants to be careful with that because this council has been big about making sure we're not taking away infrastructure, much needed infrastructure dollars as well. But as Colin has noted, worst case scenario, there is still money in the operating contingency, but ultimately, you know, what we do still need to do is mitigate not only the current situation, but do this evaluation so you can decide on whether we want to mitigate our winter control costs for the future as well, based on the standards.
Counselor Schwint?
I think my memory is coming back to the last meeting. It wasn't three options, it wasn't my intent. It was picked from three buckets because it's too big a number to draw just one in the area. So if we can identify three different pots to pull that $455,000 out of, that's the only way to address the shortfall.
Thank you. Mayor Shontz?
I guess I've got a couple of things that come to mind. First is all the, all the calls we've gotten this year on roads. So we're talking winter control, minimum maintenance standards, as opposed to the, the, sort of the condition of our gravel roads, I'm assuming.
Yes, so that can certainly be a part of that conversation from a service delivery perspective for sure. Yeah, and I appreciate, you know, the complaints and that we've seen in that. I think there is answers to that. I think we are putting that together as well. Mayor Shontz and for, for council, we can share that information. And I think that our position will remain is unfortunately, at times, we need to spend money to save money. We would see a greater benefit from an asset perspective to look to convert those roads that are further away. We have been looking at comparators. Center Wellington is a comparator for us as far as we're concerned from a road perspective, from a gravel perspective, just to see how they're situated and sized as well and compliments in trying to do that comparison. And that would be part of our, our update as well to council, just looking at that. But we would, staff would certainly advocate to look to convert gravel roads in, in certain areas to try to reduce some of that.
So I think we need more than conversion because we're not going to hit all the gravel roads at once. But I think that, I think you're right. That's a discussion probably for another day. If today is focusing on winter control, is that?
That was the intent, yes, correct.
So, so how much could we actually save by reducing our service? I, I think just similar to this, the climate action piece, I think we have to balance the two pieces.
And through you, Chair Bryant, to Mayor Shontz, that's, that's exactly what we intend to come back with before budget cycle. So we can have an idea, appreciating again that we are contingent on weather, obviously. So we will base that on, on some historical averages and time spent and we'll do an analysis that way for council's consideration.
Any other comments, questions? Go ahead.
Chair Bryant, you did ask about a Class V roadway.
Yes.
In alphabetical order. Albert Street, Alton Way, Apollo, Berlin, Bluebird, Bristol Creek. Those would be Class V roads as far as the minimum maintenance standards goes. There's a long list of them, Brubaker Street and so forth. There's a whole bunch of Class V's that we have.
And Class VI would be what?
Sorry, which?
Class VI? Because you mentioned V and VI, that's why I'm asking.
Yep, appreciate that.
I know, I put you on the spot.
It's okay. We got a lot of Class V roads. Class VI's, we would be into, you're probably more into, think about this, you're more into cul-de-sacs, right? Bobalink, Brown Thrasher, Bunting, Canary Court, some, like, would be Class VI's as well. Again, speed and volume dictate that road classification per the minimum maintenance standard legislation.
So they're all basically urban? Yeah, okay. Any other questions, comments? Go ahead.
So then, what are III and IV? Like you've just named off pretty much all our residential roads.
Right. Benjamin Road would be a Class III. Chiligo Road, Crow's Foot Road, so your higher volume, higher speed roadways would constitute Class III's. Floridale Road, Hopeville Creek. Barnswallow would be a Class IV. We'd have Bytes Coburn, Cox Creek, Durant. First Street would be Class IV roads.
Okay. Any other comments? None? Then you can go ahead with your wastewater, Mr. Poupay.
Apologize, that's the way I thought I was speaking to you the first time around, so.
Now it's time.
Thank you, Chair Bryant. So through you to council, I think I need to take council on a, on a slight history tour regarding water meter reads and sort of how the township has evolved and that. I think that is important context to understand where we are and where we're heading. So I have had the luxury, I guess, of witnessing the entire evolution. When I first started here, we had our wastewater operators that would go around with books and they would do, visit every single property and read the meters. And at other times, there were multiple meters, as you can imagine, on properties. But what was so valuable with that was it's a systemic knowledge that our operators had. They knew exactly where the meter was and what properties had uniquenesses and everything like that. There was a really good check and balance to that. We had one person in finance who managed all that. So they would take the books and manually input that and create a bill for residents. Not a perfect system. There were estimates that happened. We couldn't read in the rain. That was one of the challenges we had. So we were weather dependent on when we read. And, and that, that happened monthly, sometimes bimonthly. But that's how that was up until about 2017. So you appreciate that. That's not that long ago. And in 2017, we looked for help. Things were growing, we're getting bigger. We have different obligations as well. So what's happening in 2017 is we reach out to contracted service. It's well-used in the region of Waterloo. And we relied on that contracted service to now take those books and go to all those. That came with challenges. One, they didn't have the systemic knowledge that our operators had. So there were errors and mistakes and a lot of them. And I can remember frustrations from finances side because what was sort of somewhat of a smooth operation turned into a bit of a rocky road for a little while because you just had contracted service and you didn't always have the same person. That was the other benefit to doing it ourselves. We would typically have the same operator attend the same spots and they were just really good at it. So here we go, third party, 2017. And we knew we had to get out of this and we knew we were going to remote read. That was the intent. But from 2017 now to, there's a 2021 transition period. So we lasted about three years, three to four years where we're realizing we need to get out of this, go to a remote read. So in 2021, we're trying to get to remote read. We're in COVID, obviously. So this whole program is kind of being rolled out and programmed. We're remote, lots of things are happening COVID. I just think it's an important picture to paint for council and where we are and how we got here. There's typically a story to why we're here. We didn't just wake up one day and find out this is, this is the problem. So now, from 2022, we're full remote read to today. That's about three years. We had a, a large consumer leave Elmira in Global Egg. That has had an impact as well that is probably not fully appreciated. And, and I think that, that what council needs to understand is in the memo, we tried to hit some of the highlight points of things that we've realized, some pressure points. But what is, what is critically important to all this? There is not a magic bullet, oh, that's the problem. I don't know what the expectation was from staff or from council, quite honestly. It's not until we really got into the weeds and to the work that we started to realize there's a lot to this and there are a lot of people required to be involved in this. We do appreciate the support that council gave us in the hiring of a contracted service. And they have done very good work at very minimal cost. So that has helped us immensely to focus in on the highlights and the areas that we needed to do. But then it was back to staff to really do the real work and that's where we are. So I think that's important to understand as well. We have moved the needle substantially in some cases and not as much in other cases. So there's still much work to do for us. And what I wanted to just bring to council's attention, and it's in the memorandum, there is some correlation that is happening between finance and operations regarding meter reads, regarding billings. There are data sets that need to be calibrated. That's ongoing work. Some of this stuff just needs to continue and it's not happened before. It's not necessarily anyone's fault. I want to be very clear about that. It's not like, you know, one person or one department has dropped any ball. There was an evolution with the resourcing we had. We've still are struggling with some of the resources there and yet we still have this revenue challenge. Now, the good news story, I would say, is we have found some challenges that we can correct and it can be done at budget time. So with respect to volumetric rates, with respect to volumes being accounted for versus actuals, we have been able to do a deep dive more into the 2024 data. So we've got at least some pressure points there that we can bring forward to council at budget time to hopefully turn the needle in, to the, to the better. This has also forced us to look at water meter replacement program. We have not had a water meter replacement program in the township of Woolwich. We haven't had it. It's been reactive, replaced. We probably have a, close to a third of our water meters need replacing. Two things here. We've moved to new water meters that rely on battery so they can spit out data that says we are nearing its useful life and you need to replace it. That's helpful. The old meters that we still have in place have mechanical parts. And the unfortunate reality there is they slow down. So we're probably some lost revenue there. Can't quantify that yet, but I think that's important to raise is that one of the things we need to do, and you will see that presented to this council, is we are going to be moving into an RFP process for multi-year to get on a meter replacement program. And that will be ongoing. It's important to note too, we're going to obviously hit our high, high priority areas, but you can appreciate it's going to take some time and multiple years to get around the township. But then you're going to be replacing those other meters. So it's a bit of a cycle there that needs to happen. And it's an important piece. Again, we are talking about a rate-supported system that is covered in the rate or there, it should be. So that's important too. If you were, it's, it's pay kind of as you go essentially. So those were things that, that, that certainly from our department's perspective were helpful to move that and to move us into the right direction. And the other piece of this, and it's certainly a significant component, is influen-infiltration. We're doing really good work right now in St. Jacobs. That is still a challenge. But one thing I can share with council today is that we are, we are fairly confident that the work that is happening on Water and Young is going to be, show some significant reductions in the wastewater, I and I. And the reason we suspect that is because there's over 50-odd sewer laterals there and our contractor had to pause. There was so much groundwater rushing through, they had to stop. So they couldn't start. They just started again about a week ago, trying to, in the drier weather to do that. So that just shows you right away, there's a lot of inflow, infiltration, sorry, coming into that system in Water and Young. And I've been here for a while and I remember that was a project on the books for a long time. And I'm going to suggest it's likely thirteen years on the books. And it wasn't until, uh, we actually got into the lining program and were able to do that, that we were able to start to move that needle. So we are here now unfortunately at twenty twenty-five, but we feel that is a huge contributor, uh, to the challenges we have in Saint Jacobs right now. So that's a good news story, even though it doesn't sound so good quite yet. It will, uh, be good news story later this year. Um, we also have done an excellent job in Almyra. Um, we had, uh, we had services come in. They have done smoke testing. We found some challenges with, uh, where you have roof water leaders tied into reverse slope driveways directly connected into the wastewater system. So every time it rains, there would be a massive spike, as you can well imagine, any runoff from that house, that, that property. Even the road in some cases would be directly discharged into the sewer system. That's a fairly easy fix. We're exploring right now what that looks like from a storm sewer's perspective and to get it out of the sanitary into the storm. So there's a win. Um, the other piece of this is that we've been able to isolate, uh, to the areas of concern. Not all of Almyra is a problem, but we do know in around the sixties and seventies when we had asbestos cement, um, sewer mains. Uh, those are leaky. Those, uh, la- uh, those, um, joints are leaky. And most importantly, those connections at the main line are leaky. Um, so we've been able to determine areas and we've been able to isolate that based on, uh, monitoring data that we've been installing. And we've been able to witness that through rainfall events. So part of this ask is also to spend some money, um, to further explore that. So that we can, uh, prepare a better capital program to start lining those areas so that we can seal up those systems. Um, and that's part of this ask today as well, as part of the update. But I think, um, the other piece of this is, is some of the, uh, software items. One of the things we had expected to receive through the remote read program was some of the high-level alarms. Or there would be a, 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 a trigger to us if there was a, a meter pulled, uh, from a property. Um, those services were not part of the original prac- uh, package that we had received. So that's another ask that we will, uh, look to, um, explore through budget deliberations. So that we can have that kind of ability as well from both finance and operations side. So that finance could then get triggers or we would have alarms about some of that stuff and we can address that right away. And that was a customer service piece, um, because we, uh, uh, have certainly had people here where it might be two months. Maybe we've been estimating, uh, for a number of months and all of a sudden there's a massive bill and you have a homeowner in front of council asking for relief. Cause they didn't know. This type of thing would trigger that right away. We would know very quickly in real time that there may be a problem there at a home. And again, some of these comparisons need to happen as well, right? So, um, so having software able to do that, having resources, being able to communicate that, uh, and deal with that can be a help for sure. Um, so I don't know if there is anything else that council would like to hear, ask any questions. Maybe I stop here and, and see if there's any questions right now.
Thanks through you Chair to the Director. Um, I guess just starting out, do you have any updates on water wastewater numbers for April, May? I think you gave us a standing update a while ago for March. Um, where deficits are and kind of whether those numbers are looking like, or maybe that's a question for the Director.
Uh, through the Chair to Councilor Burgess. So, um, you've seen the Q one report, which we're pretty close, um, to, we're, had a slight deficit. Um, April, I gave a verbal update that we were trending pretty good. I thought that was related to the increase in the water and wastewater rates that we had in March. Um, but the most recent report that we ran, um, the latest deficit numbers, we are showing a pretty significant deficit in wastewater. Uh, four hundred thousand year-to-date as of May. And in, in wastewater and then in water, a hundred and thirty-three thousand. So this is five months of the year. So it's, it's similar to what we were experiencing last year where we had a four hundred and fifty-two thousand, um, deficit. And water is a little bit better, but it could be a similar deficit, um, to, to last year, po- potentially.
Thanks for that. I guess just following up on that then Jared. Um, I appreciate the explanations you're giving and the stuff you're looking at. But if we're still having this big decrease and it's similar to last year. Are you able to quantify any data? You have any, like through the meters you're looking at or the billing and matching it up? Have you seen tangible changes? Is there some data you can bring to council to show us stuff that's being done? Yeah, like back in Q one during budget, we just, I think council emphasized a big issue that says. We're losing hundreds of thousands, if not millions over this time. Um, and we just want to really make sure that stuff's being done. Looking at the resolution, when they talk about verbal updates monthly, but also quarterly updates. And I was hoping to get a bit more information on, yeah, what it's looking like. Just wondering if you can comment on that.
Yeah, it has been challenging to quantify because of there's, um, so many pieces that we're actively engaged in right now. Um, I think one of the bigger bangs for our buck is going to be this lining. And at the time, we had certainly expected that contract to be near done now. We didn't expect it to be paused. So we've actually unfortunately witnessed a whole lot of water entering the system knowingly. And there wasn't anything we could really do because the contractor was absolutely unable to line it. So we're really hoping that's going to be a big win for us in Saint Jacobs. We're expecting that to be a big win for us in Saint Jacobs. The other part of this was we didn't know Almyra. We just knew that there was, uh, a, a lot of INI happening. We didn't know where. Um, so you know, that is a move that we do know now where. Um, and again, we just need to figure out what the best bang for our buck there is as well. So, um, I mean, the good news at Saint Jacobs and Almyra are generally the challenging areas. I would suggest that we are winning, um, and it may not look quite like we are winning yet. Uh, but we are in the sense that every time we meet and we meet frequently, um, is, there's always a new find and a new win. Like, oh, that's solved, move in the box. So we used to have a lot, a lot of, uh, estimated reads. Those have dropped dramatically. We're not estimating, we're getting actuals. That's better. Some of this is budget-related and we can explain that, uh, later. I don't think, uh, we'd be in a position to explain that quite yet now. Unless, um, potentially there was an in-camera, um, but, um, but there, uh, there are some wins to happen, uh, as well in that too. So, you know, it, it's, it's just, it's, the challenge quite frankly is I, I don't know again, what the expectation. If, if it was a quick and easy to say, oh, that was the reason and there we are. But there are so many things at play that feed into this and that's the reality that we're finding. And you don't know until you know. And here we are, uh, becoming more informed and realizing where we need to put more energy.
So for our contract position, can you give some tangible examples or data on what he's done and the effort he's put into it? Like I know you said he's been doing stuff for chief, but, um, yeah, if he can put in more hours, costs a bit more money, but find more results. Like, can you expand on that and what he's done and what he's found? Like give some examples.
Sure, uh, through Chair, uh, to, to, uh, Councilor Burgess. So I would say the first, um. The first four are all our contracted service. Uh, there was no way we had staff resourcing to dive into any of that, quite frankly. And that's on, uh, the unfortunate reality. But, um, you, you would first, first approach was to figure out, um, wh- wh- what do we have? Where, wh- do we have wastewater? Do we have water? Where are the properties? We had to map all of this out first. That was, that exercise was, um, was spearheaded by our contracted service. And that was critically important. That involved GIS and, uh, through development services and finance and IS. Uh, but again, nobody was able to pull all that together because they did the dive and went through property by property, account by account. And then had that information, uh, put into our GI, GIS, which wonderfully, now we have all that data. That's fantastic. We never had that data in there before. So that was an incredible win for us. Um, improving the process with less estimating was all part and parcel to that. But the step one was figuring out what we had and what accounts were being billed for what. And we found out a number of areas where we were improperly building or not building for the right service and that sort of thing. So there was wins that came out of that. Number three, um, with about the, uh, process to calibrate, that is going to be an ongoing piece. Uh, that needs to happen between what the read says versus what the bill says. So there's a, um, a correlation that needs to happen monthly so that we can say, does this kind of generally make sense? And that process was not occurring before, um, this person was helping. Not the unfortunate reality that we're dealing with as well. And, uh, is that we do have some, uh, you know, uh, a staff member involved in this unfortunately who's, who's away. And, and that's been challenging for all of us, right? Because, uh, it's not like anybody can necessarily just jump right into that role. And certainly that's not the role of the contracted service. That wouldn't be something that they would be doing. The last piece that they were incredibly instrumental in was reviewing the entire twenty twenty-four budget versus the actuals. And I think they were able to find some pressure points there that we can explore, uh, with this council at the right time. Um, but that was very helpful because, uh, again, we weren't able to necessarily go to that depth, uh, and they were able to do that. And again, in very short order. I think that's critically important too. So I think they fulfilled the mandate. Cost-effective, short timeframes. It still puts a lot of work back on, uh, staff here to, to.
I won't, I can just finish off. I won't keep asking the same question, but I guess I'll put it out to council. Like I would like to see some data. So I know you're giving high level, but like what have you found? Give some numbers. How has this made us save money? That kind of stuff through some charts, but I'll leave it at that for now.
Counselor Cudow.
Thanks Chair through you to, uh, Director Pupay. I'm, I suppose, um, when we're looking at this, I'm more concerned, uh, about the capacity. I know that you talked about the contractor identified a number of issues, but it's on us to implement. Do we have the capacity to implement if, say, budget wasn't an issue? Would we have the manpower, person power to do that?
You Chair Bryant, so, uh. If you gave us all the money and kept the resourcing the same, the needle wouldn't move. It would, it would be slow. There would be progress. It does, it, it's, and vice versa. If you had all the staff time here and all the staff, but no money to move the needle forward, like we need to investigate the systems, again, it doesn't move as quick. Um, the contracted service component though, uh, again, had a really good conversation, uh, this morning. We're at a point where, you know, I think they've kind of come to, to, to where they needed to be, identified those pieces. And do feel that there's, uh, challenges, obviously existing challenges we're having right now as we mentioned in here. And, uh, quite frankly, um, I think there's a broader, like, we need to have a better conversation of what that looks like and what we need. We have been dedicating, uh, staff time to it, but appreciate all the other fires that are happening and it's the same people, right? So there's no additional, uh, staff really working on this from our internal perspective. And, um, again, we work, we got ourselves here. I think we have a way out. I can see, uh, a better end. I think to, uh, Councilor Burgess's question, uh, just thinking out loud is a difficult one. Because, um, you know, what, what's, what is really quantifiable and not until we really get into. Uh, you know, more time with, with seeing the impacts. Um, it's going to be a challenge to figure out exactly how much savings, because we just heard some of the revenue. We've got weather-dependent pieces. So if we got leaky systems, we're always going to be chasing that until we seal that up. So that's an impact. Certainly there's some work we can do to tighten that up. And I think that's where we are right now, is now we've found some areas that we need to spend time on. And I think that's on both departments to really put, uh, uh, put the time and energy into sort of tighten some of that up. So that would be very, I think at this stage right now, it'd be very difficult to say that I could come back in a month and, and we would have a quantifiable, uh, number for council. I don't think that's quite possible yet.
Counselor Schwint.
So I read this briefly this afternoon, because, yeah, just came out and didn't have time to do a deep dive. So I don't have all the numbers I should have in my head. But basically, I think the reserves, negative one point two million water wastewater from last year.
It, it, it's fair. I think they might be a little bit higher, because, uh, sometimes we don't spend all of the, the capital projects from the previous years. The projection might be a little higher, but it's fair to say we have very little to no reserves essentially.
Negative, okay. And we're looking like we're going to lose another million dollars this year. So call it negative two point two million, uh, rate, um, system. I know my bank would be saying, you're not operating next month at that rate. So what's going to change before we let you keep on operating? I'm getting the sense that you're identifying problems and what the issues are. I'm not getting the sense we're actually addressing them yet in terms of spending the money to fix them. Cause all those problems are going to take money to fix. Meters cost money. Fixing our pipes costs money. I think everything we do is going to cost money. So even if we fix a problem, we're spending money. So the deficit keeps on growing and growing and growing. Are we taking very little steps to fix that deficit? How do we not change our rates? Right now, like, I'm really confused on this one, because we're, we're digging the hole month by month. And the solution to fixing problems will still cost money.
So if I had to answer, sorry, through you, um, Chair Bryant to Counselor Schwint. I think, um. I think the INI in Saint Jacobs is, uh, a big win for us. And I think the unfortunate part is we're just right in it. Uh, again, we were hoping to have that done and we would have seen the impact because we have pre and we will have post-monitoring. That is a big lost leader right now in Saint Jacobs. That's a huge one. So if we can turn that corner and start to see that, we will, that should be an immediate impact. So I think that's important for us to at least understand that. I think there are some other pieces that both departments can look at right away from a budgetary perspective to see what we've been, uh, or the actuals. And look at some of that deep dive together. Um, but I would advocate that at this stage, we don't do a knee-jerk quite yet. I don't know, uh, and I don't necessarily, um, uh, believe that we would, um, be exactly where we were last year. I gotta believe, because I'm at those meetings all the time, we're finding things, we're picking up revenue. So there always is a bit of a, a lag in that. And I'm just going to ask, and I appreciate this is a du- difficult ask. We have a little more patience to come back in a few months, again, with better data to see what that looks like. But I really, really do, and I will get a timeframe for, for council. I really do believe that Saint Jacobs needs to be complete and we need a billing cycle to come through that, to start to see that impact too. And again, none of this is going to be quick, quick, quick. I think that's a potential that we should discuss for sure. I just think it's slightly premature right now to make that decision.
So to follow up that, under that scenario, the INI project in Saint Jacobs, are we paid for that? Or sorry, has it been accounted for in the budget or not going to be? That's part of, about one point. Let's call it the one million dollar deficit. We expect this year includes paying for that.
Yes, it's in the budget currently right now at eight hundred thousand was what I believe was in there for.
Go ahead.
Uh, through you Chair Bryant to Counselor Schwint. I would concur with, uh, Director Pupay. I think it's probably premature to raise rates. I would just hate to throw money at the problem, raising rates just because we have a deficit without determining kind of the, the root cause. And to see if some of these actions will, will bear fruit. We increased the rates almost ten percent last year. I was hoping that would also. Um, that's where I was kind of optimistic in April when I reported that it seemed like we had turned a corner. Most recent, um, numbers don't really bear that out. I think it's related to the INI and the big snowmelt that we had. But I would just hate to, without understanding kind of the full, um, scope of kind of what's needed to fix this. Just to raise rates arbitrarily to cover kind of the deficits. Um, we already have relatively high rates. I'd rather personally find, um, the answer to some of these problems and to see if some of these interventions will, will have an effect. And then we'll always have the option during budget to raise the rates as well.
Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. I wonder, um, it, do we have any sense of what the savings might be? Or, or what the cost of INI is in Saint Jacobs? Like what's the magnitude? How does it relate to the eight hundred thousand that it's costing us to fix it? Can you give us anything?
Fortunately, I can't at this time.
Maybe I can just help. And again, I, I couldn't quantify to the exact dollar amount. But there is just the difference between what we bill our customers and then what the region bills us is that difference. And in Saint Jacobs, for example, it's almost fifty percent. So the region are billing us for every, you know, one liter and we're only collecting, you know, half a liter for that. So there's like a fifty percent decrease. It's very, it, it's very difficult to identify that's exactly INI cause. It could be, you know, missed billings or meter issues or those kind of things. But that, there is a, there's a way to quantify at least the missing component and it's pretty close to our deficits. I couldn't, I could probably do some quick math, uh, through you Chair Bryant. It's essentially the, the difference between the, like, the, the revenue recovered and what they bill us. And then multiply that by the amount of lost revenue. So if we went instead of fifty percent loss, we had a ten percent loss or twenty percent difference. And then we close that gap by thirty percent, we could quantify something there. But I think the important thing to understand is this is a one-time cost to hopefully address that situation. So if we have to spend eight hundred thousand, even spend five hun- say five hundred thousand will be an ongoing savings, hopefully every year. Um, but I can try to quantify some of those potential.
Yeah, if, is that something you can do a quick calculation now for? I think council's just trying to get some sense of what is the magnitude really? I think council's just trying to get some sense of what is the magnitude really? We're, we're heading into budget and so to kind of wrap our heads around some kind of magnitude.
Thanks Chair through you. Sticking with INI. It lists the next step is to obtain contracted services to complete the CCTV inspection program. I'm wondering if there is a timeline attached to that or if that's kind of scheduled for after the next update in October.
Uh, through you Chair Bryant. So if, if council was to authorize us to move forward with the CCTV inspection, we would jump on that immediately. Procurement wise, we probably have to have something on the street for at least five days thereabouts. And then we would look, we do believe that is attractive work. So we have explored that with some of the contractors that do that work, see availability. And we feel confident that we would be able to get a good contractor to help us out with that. So we think we could execute on that fairly quickly. You know, the, the time really then becomes how long it takes to get in there and then assess that data. That's really the, the exercise. What the intent would be, would be to kind of do an oversight as they're doing the work. So that we're not just, you know, going through, even though there's value to it, we appreciate that the mandate is to try to get to a solution quickly. But there's also value from an asset management perspective. So there, I'm wearing two hats. That, you know, it is valuable information in of itself, too. It's not wasted data that we would have. But I think the, the intent here would be just to find problems, come up with what that may look like and how we could solve that and then move on. But could we get that done in the next couple of months? That might be challenging, but we could certainly try.
Counselor Schwint.
So I'd budgeted work result to deficit.
Unfortunately, that would add to the deficit. That was not included in, as part of the 2025 capital program. We, we could certainly look for savings to see what we've spent to date and where we are. That could be something we could certainly explore. And, you know, the 250 is the do everything. I think if I was to say, what do we absolutely need? I would say 100,000 of that would be a must do to move forward. So that's probably as good as I could give you today right now.
Uh, through you Madam Chair to council, a couple of things I want to comment on, especially since we're talking about INI. So INI has been a historical problem for Woolwich. Um, and even when I joined in 2007, we were involved in work with the region. Where they were helping to fund some of the INI work because they were resistant to do any sort of capital upgrades. At the wastewater treatment plant until we got our INI house in order. The difficulty, though, is eventually the council of the day and staff saw fit to say to the region. We can't keep doing the INI program an impotent item. Because it was getting so expensive to try and find pinhole needles. You know, in, in the system. And in our analysis, it was going to be far more cost effective ultimately to make sure the wastewater treatment plant upgrades moved ahead. Eventually, the region saw fit with, with our thinking and analysis. That being said, the other thing that I wanted to bring up is, you know, it was clear to me when I sat down with. Colum and Jared and, and even Stephen at the start of things, that. As Jared alluded to earlier, when we ran into the million dollar water loss because of the auto flusher being stuck open. That was an easy find. Uh, that was the silver, whatever lining to find. You know, and, and to fix and make sure that doesn't ever happen. Again, here, you know, here the difficulty is, is as Jared had noted. It's a multitude of things that are adding up to this. There is no, there is no magic. An, an account that we found or no magic auto flusher on the sewer side. I think that's the difficulty. And what I'm reminded of is what we did talk with council about in terms of. Engaging a, a contract service was the fact that in simple terms, and this is what has been happening. In simple terms, staff is a support for Jared and his team in terms of saying. And this is where the contractors come in. Here's a problem. Go out and identify it. Here's a problem. Go and follow it. Here's a problem. And it's like doing all this investigative work. But it was clear right from the outset that the contractor's work was going to be in the first three to four months. You know, which roughly speaking is around the time that we're, we're talking about in terms of identifying concerns. But the real work, and I think Counselor Gudow, you've picked up on this, is in the boots on the ground, operations has to go out there. Finance doesn't have the experience and expertise nor the equipment to go and look at this stuff. We need the operational expertise. And so while we've supplemented, you know, dare I say, on, on the financial side to help with the contracted service. To identify the things that operations needs to look at. You know, we're still actually trying to manage with existing resources to find some of this stuff. And I think Jared's tried, you know, to present as much as he can in, in a positive and good light. But I appreciate council's frustration, I'm sure is, with the auto flusher. You know, it was easy. We could point out, here's the data. Here, it's, it's been a little bit more difficult because after the work that our contractor has done. There's a lot more work boots on the ground that, that, you know, Jared and, and Carter and their teams are, uh, need to do. I, I totally get it. And I think staff appreciates where council's coming from. You know, in, in the sense that. The latest information from finances, you know, were trending the same. However, I would highlight the fact that the Director of Finance also noted it was an exceptional winter. And if you look at past history, we see wastewater deficits in the past that we've experienced because the inflow and infiltration does go up. You know, so I think also things to concentrate on is, you know, Jared has mentioned some of the actions that have been taken. We will have to see over the next few months what materializes. But I understand the struggle for council is real. The struggle is for us. There just doesn't seem to be any magic fixes. And I don't think for a minute. You know, I don't think for a minute that if we had our contracted service working, you know, all embellished 24/7. That that will automatically yield results. And unfortunately, and I understand, you know, council's frustration in terms of what we have to spend more money to increase. Unfortunately, with the INI work, as I've previously said, yeah, there's a lot of expense and there's a lot of work. This municipality has spent a lot of money over the last 18 years on INI work, sewer lining, et cetera. But, you know, I wish we were further ahead than we are because the struggle is real.
I'm trying to bounce expectations because I knew it's gonna be hard to find the problems. It's gonna take time. I think my frustration tonight is we're not expecting or counting for what those problems are gonna cost us to fix. We're just assuming that we're gonna fix them and that'll make our deficit go our way. What it's gonna cost is a pile of money to fix those problems. And that's $250,000 here that is not part of our projected deficit. That's, it's real. There's gonna be, once we do the work, as a closed circuit TV, then we have to find, fix what we found. I'm pretty sure that's not budgeted anywhere there. So normally the fix is five times diagnosis. So that's why my concern is growing and growing with deficit because. I haven't seen, okay, based on our best guess, knowing the guests will be wrong. That's a starting point.
Maybe if I can, a couple of points to make to Counselor Schwint's concerns. So apologize for not being able to quantify that yet. I think what we can commit to is, is a couple of things here. One, we will solve this problem. That I can attest to for sure. This is a solvable problem. So I think that's first and foremost is very important. It's how we get there and what does it look like? So I think what, what we will do to come back and we will make sure that we can address council's concern with respect to quantifying. What the investment will look like for savings. We are unfortunately going to have to spend money to save money, but it will right size the ship. We know that. So what we haven't been able to do yet, because unfortunately we've been still relying on data. So, but, you know, we only are as good as the monitoring data that we get and we have had some good weather. We had good snowmelt. So we're getting some decent baseline data and we're able to understand what those rebounds look like through weather events. That's important for Amira because that's the first time we've really had that good picture. Look at it. And that is still ongoing with respect to looking at manholes, maintenance hole, sorry, and, and that pipe network piece. So I can assure council that we will be able to at least suggest we estimate, and there'll be estimates here. On, you know, this is the type of INI we're dealing with. Here's the expense that we would need to do. This could be the cost benefit savings. And then we can make that decision as past councils have had to make. When we were doing the third pipe system that David Brenneman had, had mentioned earlier, that was cost prohibitive. And it became cheaper to just pay for the clean water. So unfortunately, we didn't move from that vintage to the lining right away. We had a big gap in that. Now we're, I think, a little more efficient with respect to the lining. Technology is better. So lining is very cost effective and it does come with a good bang for the buck. But I appreciate that I do not have that information available and I will make sure that we do have that information for council next time we report.
Through you Chair. Thanks for that. And for me, I'd like to continue to see progress on this. And if the CCTV inspection program is the natural next step, it's gonna provide us with more data. That can help us make decisions on where to continue to invest. So I'm considering, I don't know, Clerc, if it would be direction or if you would need a formal motion to unlock up to $100,000 between now and October. To continue the work in identifying where INI is coming from.
Through you Chair Bryant. I just had, uh, just did some quick calculations on Mayor Shance's and Counselor Schwint's. Question about how much would we potentially save? So this is, try not get to get it too into the weeds and this is very high level, all the usual disclaimers around this. But I estimate roughly if we had, we were roughly 50% in St. Jacobs in Elmira on the wastewater side. The difference between the regional billing and our own billing. So it would be roughly at $3 per liter. If we could close the gap by 50% instead of be having a 50% gap, we would have a 75% gap. It would be 1.4 million in extra revenue we would generate. Which you might think, because I had to double check some of these numbers, well, that's higher than our deficit. So one of the factors is we're actually, our revenue that we're generating to Counselor Schwint's point. We actually have higher rates than we could if we had more accurate kind of consumption numbers. We're adjusting our rates to essentially cover some of this deficit already. So we could potentially, if we got it all cleaned up, it could be 1.4 million in additional revenue.
Counselor Schwint.
Assuming it's free to do it. But my expectation is the cost to do it is well worth it, but it's gonna be significant and it's gonna be ongoing. It's not gonna be one and done. There's gonna be more maintenance going ahead. Not budgeting for the maintenance on a long-term basis. I think that's how we get in the holes like this.
Is there any funding available through other levels of government for INI specifically?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor. You were gonna second it.
I was seconding it if the mover would designate where the funds are coming from.
Director Lynn.
Uh, through the chair, it would, it would have to come through the water and wastewater reserve because it needs to be kept separate. We couldn't even use operating contingency. We do have, if you recall, we did start a operating contingency reserve, kind of that rate stabilization reserve last year. So we could use a portion of that. I believe we started adding 100,000 each year for the water and wastewater side through the budget process. Last year, I think a lot of it's spoken for as well because of the ongoing deficits. But I mean, we would just move it into a further deficit to hopefully be made up for with future revenue. Like, there isn't a magic pot additional, other than the water wastewater reserves.
Okay, so we have a motion. Are you seconding the current?
Unfortunately, we have to spend money to save money here. And I think that this is money well spent, unfortunately, if I can classify it as that. To really address the INI situation. So I would hate to see progress stalled on this because we couldn't find where to pull the money from. I trust that Director Lynn will find the most reasonable place to take that money from.
It's all that. But we have, I know we have to do it, but let's be frank. It's going on the credit card because we're not willing to raise rates.
And it's either the 100,000 is going on the credit card or we continue to pay out the INI loss on credit card, right?
So do we have a motion and a seconder? Yes. Okay, so Eric is seconding Nathan's motion. Do we have any more discussion around this? Mayor Shance.
For clarity, that's the 250K.
Up to 100.
100? Can you read back the motion, Jeff, to clarify?
Through your Chair Bryant to council. 250 was to do everything. That would be the top end. That would be a cap that we would look to explore. Intent wasn't to spend out the 250, but have authorization. I did state to this council that we would want nothing less than $100,000 to start, yes. But would prefer the 250 if I could say that out loud.
So, sorry, so what's in the motion?
I prefer the 100 and I would be open to further discussion, but 100 was where I stood on that.
So what does the motion say, Jeff? Just to clarify for everybody?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have that council direct staff to unlock up to $100,000 from the wastewater reserve. To continue work to identify INI issues.
Is that your intent? You're okay with that, Eric? Okay, any more discussion? None? And I'm gonna call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Don't know? It, it was carried at any rate. Okay, moving on. Mayor's report. Mayor Shance, do we have anything?
I had two things I wanted to report on. First, as we've discussed that at the region, we were looking at. Possibilities of moving the library from a regional model to a local model. And at our last meeting, we decided not to pursue that at this time. But we are still waiting for more financial breakdown so that we can look at actually what. What the costing looks like and, and maybe do a little further analysis. And the second thing is the Westman Rose Bridge rebuild. Will be coming to Regional Council tomorrow night. Speaking of budget, it's come in considerably over budget. So it'll be an interesting conversation.
Any council reports or updates? Counselor Caddo.
Thanks Chair through you. I just wanted to recognize that Woolwich had its third annual pride celebration not long ago. And I just wanted to thank the co-chairs Angie and Sherry and entire Woolwich Pride for the amazing job that they did. Both at the pride, but this Monday I had the privilege of attending the Woolwich Memorial Center for the mural unveiling. And so the next time members of the public are at the memorial center, please, you know, go to the west exit and check out the, the mural. It's absolutely beautiful.
Thank you. Outstanding activity list. Any, anybody have anything for that one? No? Items pulled from the information package? Anything? Nothing? Items for information and public notices? Anything? Nothing? Well, this brings us to the end of our regular meeting of council. On behalf of council, we thank all those who watched the meeting or those who took the time to participate tonight. We will now be going back into a closed session to discuss, to discuss one staffing matter and one Ontario Land Tribunal matter. Do I have a mover for that? Counselor Grant seconded. Counselor Schwint, all in favor? And that would be carried. Thank you.